We have a quorum. Well, I want to start by wishing everyone happy 5/20 day. Today, it May 20th, we celebrate here as City Planning as 5/20 Day to celebrate the 520 miles of coastline of the city. And so I think it's appropriate that the first matter that is up on the agenda is about resiliency.
Okay. This is the review session for the New York City Planning Commission of Monday, May 20th. The time is 1:04 PM, and a quorum is indeed present. The first item on the agenda is a certification of a number of site selections, acquisitions, and dispositions in Staten Island Community Districts 1, 2, and 3, Queens Community District 10 and 14, and Brooklyn Community Districts 13 and 15. To introduce the proposal is our Deputy Director of Waterfront Planning, Brendan Pilar.
And I'll note that yesterday Brendan and other members of the team led various tours of the waterfront, and I had the pleasure of participating in a team or in a walk of Resilient Redhook, which was done jointly by City Planning and the Office of Emergency Management. I'd say the highlight of the trip for everyone was the fact that Brendan brought along Margot, who was absolutely delightful and engaged member of the group.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for that. I'm glad you enjoyed the tour of Redhook, and I'm very proud of my nine-month-old waterfront enthusiast. 5/20 is a de facto holiday for celebrating the waterfront. I'm glad we've been able to extend the celebrations through this weekend and today and have a waterfront project to present to you all. The project relates to an application by the HPD, along with co-applicants DCAST, Parks, and DEP, seeking site approval, site selection, acquisition, and disposition of 141 tax lots to facilitate the responsible reuse of these sites, either as new housing designed to flood-resistant construction standards or permanent open space. The project's sites are located in Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten Island, and after I present a bit of a background, I'll turn the presentation over to planners from each of those boroughs to walk you through the sites and the planned programming for those sites. Before we get into the sites themselves, I just want to give a bit of a background on the city's Build It Back program. It was launched in the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy in 2013 as a voluntary program to help homeowners, landowners, and tenants recover from the devastating effects of the storm. It's funded by a $2.2 billion grant from HUD, Disaster Recovery Grant, and it's overseen by the Mayor's Office of Housing Recovery and HPD. For 12,000 households, in 8,000 one-to-three-family residences were served by the program, as were nearly 20,000 households served in 143 multifamily developments. The program offered homeowners five general options, and I'll talk about how those were selected. But the reason for the applications today is option number five, the acquisition and buyout option. These require acquisition, site selection, and disposition approvals in order to facilitate the end-use of these sites. Just a snapshot of the structure of the program. The HUD grants come through the city's budget office and are directed through HRO and HPD. HPD was the agency responsible for evaluating the pathways each homeowner was presented, and also used a sub-receipient called Project Rebuild, Inc., to manage the acquisition and buyout program. This was a way to facilitate the acquisition of these properties in an expeditious manner, and the sub-receipient, Project Rebuild, Inc., or PRI, handled the acquisition from there on. They're also responsible for delivering the space demolished and remediated as necessary. So the first step for determining the pathway for a building in the Build It Back program was to determine the amount of damage sustained by the building. If the damage to the building was more than 50% of its value, the home was eligible for reconstruction, elevation, or acquisition or buyout. Now, as you can see, the vast majority of the homes that were in the Build It Back program opted voluntarily for the rebuild elevation or reimbursement. The lots that are subject to the actions today are less than 2% of all properties within the Build It Back program. There's relatively equally between sites that were on a pathway for acquisition and buyout, and I'll talk a little bit about how that decision was made with this next slide. So consistent with the federal guidelines for the HUD Disaster Recovery Grant, HPD, in conjunction with other agencies, including the Department of City Planning, performed a technical analysis to determine a pathway for each property in the acquisition and buyout program. And the considerations varied broadly, from area planning goals to very site-specific conditions such as zoning and land use, sensitive habitat like wetlands and coastal erosion hazard areas where the site was located in the FEMA-designated floodplain, and other site-specific regulatory constraints like having a site located in an area with a homeowners' association. I'll also note that sites were also considered based on their access to street infrastructure or street access itself, the quality of that access, and access to sewer and sanitary So the Acquisition for Redevelopment program has really two arms. One is the Acquisition for Redevelopment, that's the housing arm. So these are sites that have been acquired by Project Rebuild, and the end-use is planned to be resilient, one- or two-family residences through deed restrictions. And then the redevelopment of these properties would go through two kind of sub-pathways. The first is either sold through private auction. The sites designated for private auction, as you'll see as the borough staff goes through the various sites, are more constrained. They're generally interior lots that don't have street frontage or otherwise served by poor infrastructure or some other kind of site constraints like irregular lot conditions. The sites that do have good street frontage and are part of more established neighborhood fabrics, HPD has a second pathway for housing redevelopment, and that's to use their open-door program to facilitate the construction of resilient, affordable homeownership housing on sites where it's more appropriate. On the other end of the acquisition and buyout pathway is the sites designated for permanent open space. And again, these determinations were made based on a number of sites and area planning characteristics, and these are required by, through this program, to be permanent open space, no permanent structures constructed on them, and really generally planted and used for stormwater management purposes. And the vast majority of the sites slated for the open-space program are expected to be transferred to a public agency, whether it's the Parks Department, the Department of Environmental Protection, DCAST, or even in one case, the National Park Service. Other sites slated for, within the buyout program, will be sold on the private market to a neighbor for a yard expansion program. These sites, as I mentioned again, will have to be kept open, so again, no buildings or structures will be placed on these sites. And it's important to note at the bottom of the slide that the city really needs, through its HUD grant, the ability to acquire and dispossess of these sites should they not be developed pursuant to the deed restrictions on these sites. The city's Housing Recovery Office will be responsible for enforcing these deed restrictions, and they will be on the hook essentially because the HUD grant requires this, seeing through the end-use of all these sites. So just to circle back, to just talk about the grant requirements, there are limitations on the future use of all these lots in the Acquisition and Buyout program. As I mentioned, the housing sites are required to be elevated and designed to flood-resistant construction standards. There's also a requirement that the new homes carry flood insurance in perpetuity. On sites, as I mentioned, that are suitable for housing that are part of more established neighborhood fabrics, HPD will pursue affordable housing redevelopment. On the other side of the program pathways, the open-space sites, again, will be required as open space for perpetuity, and no structures other than public restrooms or flood-control structures on some of the publicly owned sites would be permitted. Now, the compliance, as I mentioned, would be enforced through deed restrictions. The housing sites would be required to be redeveloped within three years of the site transferring ownership. Failure to comply with the deed restrictions would result in the surrender of the property back to the city, and the city finding another end-user for that site, or the site could potentially be sold at fair market value. So as I mentioned at the beginning, there are sites in three boroughs, Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten Island, and each site and each borough has a different set of actions that are required to facilitate the end-use of these properties. So now I'm going to turn it over to the Borough Staff to walk you through the plans for each site.
Katie Farrar, DCP, Brooklyn Office. So starting in Brooklyn, there are 13 lots located across four neighborhoods in the program, all in southern Brooklyn, Community Districts 13 and 15. So I'll walk through each of these neighborhoods to give an understanding of the lots, proposed for actions, and the surrounding conditions there. In Brooklyn, all 13 lots are designated for housing redevelopment. HPD has proposed four of those lots in two neighborhoods to be redeveloped through their managed redevelopment for affordable homeownership. And as Brendan discussed, HPD made that distinction based on site-specific conditions, including physical and policy constraints on lots that might make it challenging for them to meet standards of applicability to HPD's affordable housing programs. Several sites in Brooklyn, you'll see, lack access, immediate access to public streets, for example. All of the sites, including those for housing managed redevelopment as well as private auction, will be limited to one-to-two-family homes, and the actions on sites in Brooklyn are for the city's right to acquire and dispose of the lots when and if needed. And there's no sites in Brooklyn proposed for the open-space programs. So starting in Seagate, there's two lots in the Seagate neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 13. Seagate is a private gated community at the west end of Coney Island, and land use is primarily one-to-two-family residential with some community facilities, and the lots in Seagate are both proposed for private auction. And showing both lots in Seagate, all lots will be turned over to new owners vacant after demolition, but some, as you can see one example here, are still pre-demolition And there are seven lots in Sheepshead Bay in Community District 15. Sheepshead Bay is located northeast of Coney Island, and land use is largely residential with mixed use and commercial activity along Evans Avenue and the waterfront, and the Belt Parkway runs to the north of the residential area there. The sites proposed for residential redevelopment are located in the Bungalow Courts, where single-family homes were originally constructed for seasonal use but have largely been converted to year-round use. And the Sheepshead Bay lots are proposed for the private auction branch of the program. And two examples here, again, the one on the left showing a home that will be demolished, property that will be demolished, whereas it's an open vacant lot on the right. There are three lots in Garretson Beach in Community District 15. Garretson Beach is located on a peninsula adjacent to Marine Park, and land use is primarily one- and two-family residential with some commercial activity on Garretson Avenue. And the three lots in Garretson are proposed for HPD's managed redevelopment program, and two of the lots shown here. Finally, there's one lot in the Manhattan Beach neighborhood of Community District 15. Manhattan Beach is on the east end of Coney Island to the south of Sheepshead Bay. It's primarily one- and two-family residential, and the Manhattan Beach lot is proposed for HPD managed redevelopment, shown here in the center.
Hi, Halasala with the Queens Office. Moving on to Queens, the proposed actions would facilitate the future use of 74 proposed lots spread throughout southern Queens across 10 neighborhoods and Community Districts 10 and 14. In Hamilton Beach and Broad Channel, the CPC approved the adoption of the Special Coast Risk District in 2017 based on the findings from the Resilient Neighborhood Study. The zoning designation addresses coastal areas at risk of flooding and limits new development and protects vulnerable areas. There are 11 resilient housing lots in Queens. All are expected to be sold to private owners and redeveloped as flood-compliant one- and two-family homes. Eight of the resilient housing lots are proposed for the Housing Managed Redevelopment Program, which is anticipated to be acquired by the city, then disposed to private owners to develop affordable housing. Three of the resilient housing lots are intended for private auction, anticipated to be sold to, by Project Rebuild, to a private owner at market rate. 63 lots are programmed for open space intended by either city ownership or private ownership. The lots intended for city ownership are distributed by 21 lots for parks jurisdictions to incorporate into existing parks or create new resources. The remaining 20 open-space lots not adjacent to park property will be retained as open space under DCAST jurisdiction. Lastly, 22 open-space lots are determined for private use through the Yard Expansion Program and are expected to be privately auctioned by Project Rebuild to adjacent homeowners to acquire additional side yard. All properties are either vacant or anticipated to be vacant, with the exception of two lots in Hamilton Beach. Rambleville, Hamilton Beach, and Old Howard Beach are located north of Jamaica Bay. These neighborhoods are physically divided by the adjacent communities by two canals, the Shell Bank Basin and the Hawtree Basin, which are lined with private docks for recreational boating. The predominant land use is one- and two-family residential, vacant land, parking lots, and a few multifamily residential buildings. The proposed sites in Rambleville are intended for open space, including 16 lots that will make up the proposed Rambleville Marsh Restoration Project, as shown in green. These lots will require a site selection acquisition action and are accompanied with a fair share analysis. The remaining seven open-space lots are intended for DCAST jurisdiction through acquisition and disposition actions. Hamilton Beach has two resilient housing lots intended for private auction and five open-space lots intended for city ownership. The two lots intended for resilient housing are half of a semi-attached home, which the privately-owned half includes an occupied residential structure. Old Howard Beach has one open-space lot intended for city ownership. As a sample of the conditions in these neighborhoods, the first photo shows a site intended for the Rambleville Marsh Restoration Project, while the second photo shows three lots in Hamilton Beach, which comprise of one intended for open space and two intended for resilient housing by private auction. Broad Channel is located on an island on Big Egg Marsh in the middle of Jamaica Bay. The predominant use here is one- and two-family residences, vacant land, and open space. Several commercial and mixed-use commercial residential buildings are located along Cross Bay Boulevard, and 23 lots within this area are slated for open space, where 22 of the lots are eligible for the Yard Expansion Program, where adjacent homeowners may purchase the lots to expand their existing yards. Both of these photos show the conditions of existing vacant land that will be incorporated into adjacent property through the Yard Expansion Program. Edgemere is located between Beach 32nd Street and Beach 59th Street and is predominantly one- and two-family residential homes, multifamily buildings, open space, vacant land, and a number of community facilities. Four resilient housing lots and eight open-space lots are located within this neighborhood. Four of the open-space lots would be going to DCAST jurisdiction, one for the expansion of the Bays Water Park, and three lots for a new recreational use area in Edgemere. While the new recreational use area has an accompanied fair share analysis to the site selection and acquisition action, the Bayside Water Park expansion does not, due to the added area being less than 25% of the existing parkland. The first photo here shows an example of a site intended for a housing managed redevelopment, and the second photo is intended for the new recreational area in Edgemere. O'Vern is located between Beach 59th Street and Beach 80th Street and is predominantly residential with some commercial activity near Beach 72nd Street. Rockaway Beach extends further to the west to Beach 96th Street with multifamily residences, one- and two-family homes, and community facilities. There are two open-space lots located in O'Vern, one intended for DCAST jurisdiction, and the other for the expansion of the Brant Point Wildlife Sanctuary. Rockaway Beach has one resilient housing site intended for housing management redevelopment. This first photo shows the expansion of Brant Wildlife Sanctuary, while the second photo shows the housing managed redevelopment site. Lastly, Napanzit and Rockaway Park stretch further west on the peninsula until Jacob Reis Park. Napanzit is entirely a one- and two-family residential neighborhood, while Rockaway Park has a mix of land uses, including residential, manufacturing, commercial, and community facilities. Napanzit has one resilient housing lot intended for private auction, and Rockaway Park has two resilient housing lots intended for the housing managed redevelopment. Far Rockaway is the easternmost neighborhood of the Rockaway Peninsula with a mix of residential uses and commercial buildings, and there is one open-space lot intended for DCAST jurisdiction located in Far Rockaway. The first photo here is the private housing site in Napanzit. The second is a housing managed redevelopment site in Rockaway Park, and lastly, the open-space site in Far Rockaway.
Olivia Sullivan from the Staten Island Office. Moving on to Staten Island, HPD is seeking actions for 54 formerly residential sites that were damaged by Hurricane Sandy in Staten Island's Community Districts 2 and 3. These neighborhoods included in this application are predominantly consisting of one- and two-family homes. Some of the 54 sites are currently vacant, and others have existing homes which will be demolished. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, these 54 sites will fall into either one of two categories, open space or resilient housing. 12 of the sites fall within the open-space program and will be acquired by either Parks, DEP, or DCAST. 42 of the sites fall within the resilient housing program and will be developed as flood-resilient residential uses. Within the open-space program, there are four sites which will be acquired by Parks and incorporated into an existing Parks property. Five sites will be acquired by DEP and incorporated into the DEP Blue Belt Program, and three additional open-space sites will be acquired by DCAST. Of the sites being acquired by Parks, two will be incorporated into the existing Crescent Beach Park located in Great Kills, one will be incorporated into Blue Heron Park located in Anadale, and one will be incorporated into the proposed Tottenville Shoreline Protection Project located in Tottenville. These sites will be maintained by Parks and are required to remain as open space in perpetuity through the deed restriction. As I mentioned earlier, the sites being acquired by DEP will be part of the Blue Belt Program in Staten Island. The Blue Belt Program was designed in the 1990s to be an ecologically rich and cost-effective drainage system that naturally handles stormwater runoff that falls onto the streets and sidewalks in Staten Island. Of these five sites, one will be incorporated into the South Beach Blue Belt, three will be incorporated into the New Creek Blue Belt, and one will be incorporated into the Oakwood Beach Blue Belt. These sites will remain as open space in perpetuity due to the deed restriction to assist in the natural drainage of these areas. Three of the sites being acquired by the city do not have a planned ownership structure at this time due to the fact they are not adjacent to any existing Parks or DEP property. These sites will remain under DCAST jurisdiction until an agency or private owner is chosen to maintain them. Of the sites being acquired by DCAST, two are located in Midland Beach and one is located in Great Kills. These sites will either be maintained as open space by the city or sold to private owners as part of a yard expansion. 42 of the sites included in this application will be developed through the resilient housing program. Of the 42 sites, 26 will be developed as affordable housing through HPD's open-door program, and 16 will be sold in private auction and developed as flood-resilient residences or accessory uses to adjacent sites. As you can see, these sites are located in areas near the waterfront but are within predominantly built-up residential areas with existing infrastructure, which is why resilient housing would be appropriate in these areas. This is part of the city's ongoing work to provide affordable and flood-resistant housing in these areas. Most of these sites are located within the East Shore in Community District 2, with eight sites located in South Beach, 19 located in Midland Beach, and nine located in New Door Beach. The remaining six are located within Community District 3 with three sites in Oakwood Beach, two in Great Kills, and one in Tottenville. In summary, these are the actions being sought by HPD to facilitate the responsible future use of project sites as either resilient housing or open space within these three applications. We are all available for any questions.
Questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Schornuckles.
Thank you. Project Rebuild, how were they identified for ultimate participation in this program?
That's a great question, and I'll just point out that the city's Housing Preservation and Development Agency reps are here, and that's a question that they can address or answer for you when this comes back for the public hearing.
Okay. So they administer the so-called private auctions, right?
They administer the acquisition and buyout program. So they've acquired the properties from the previous homeowners and are awaiting the actions that are required to facilitate the end-use of these sites, either as resilient housing or as open space.
So in the case of the private auctions, those are administered by Project Rebuild, right?
Yes.
And that's done under the watchful eye of HPD?
HPD and the city's Housing Recovery Office, yes.
Okay. With regard to the open space, is there a minimum footprint for open space when you make that determination?
The site characteristics, including size, were factored into the future end-use of these sites. They vary greatly in terms of size. The sites in Broad Channel are probably less than 2,000 square feet in size, but they're also probably not sites where you could even put a building on because they're so narrow. So that's part of the reason why some sites were selected for housing redevelopment, and other sites were more optimally used for open space, given their constraints in size.
I don't know if this would ever actually happen, but let us say there's a homeowner that sells initially their property that's acquired by the city. If that homeowner decided upon seeing a rebuilt structure on what used to be their property, could they come back and bid for the property? Are they precluded from doing that?
I'm trying to think through the question. It's a... No. I'm here. We can get back to the more concrete answer, but the short answer is no.
They could not?
They could not.
No, they're not precluded. They're not precluded.
We'll get back to you with the experts.
Again, I don't, you know, this would likely be a rare occurrence if any, but, you know, just thought I'd ask.
It's a good question.
Commissioner Marine.
So I have a whole host of questions, having worked on Sandy rebuilds. So I think the answer is no, because that was my understanding as we were working on the program. If a homeowner took a buyout, they couldn't come back and buy, but that's okay because you'll get back to us on that. But I do have questions regarding, I heard from Ms. Farrar that HPD standards actually affected the decision on some of the lots, and whether or not they rebuilt them or they sold them for auction. So my question becomes, if, in fact, HPD has determined that their standards don't meet the requirements to rebuild these lots, how do we know that a homeowner who's buying these lots that are slated for redevelopment, because some of them are slated to go back into either DCAST or DEP to remain either Parks or Blue Belt, how does that affect the homeowner at the end of the day who's purchasing a lot whose sizes may not have met HPD's required sizes? How are they going to be able to build?
There weren't requirements for a given size of property, but it was just one of the considerations that HPD made in determining the end-use of the program. Because a property is designated for open space or housing, the sites for housing were generally suitable sites to redevelop a resilient one- or two-family building on them. So they were sufficiently wide, they had a sufficient lot area, they had street frontage and ability to connect into the city's sewer infrastructure. So it was just part of a whole suite of evaluations that were made by HPD and with other city agencies' help to determine an appropriate end-use for these sites.
If I could clarify, none of the sites that are being put out for one- and two-family would be impossible to build a one- and two-family. In making the initial determination of which ones go for resilient housing versus which ones go for open space, one of the factors was if it was too small to have a single-family house, it would go... Yeah, based on today's standards, then it would not be a part of the package of properties that are going out for redevelopment.
Well, that leads to my next question. This body approved a suite of, I'm going to call them allowances, for homes that did not meet certain zoning requirements, and that was for, I believe, five years. So is that five-year timeline up? How many years are left? Do these homeowners take advantage of that? How does that work?
Sure. So the separate actions that have been happening since Hurricane Sandy is just a whole-scale update of the city's zoning and building code to promote and require flood-resistant construction. The building code requires that all new buildings or substantially damaged buildings have to be built to these new higher standards. And that essentially means that living space is now elevated to a flood elevation determined by FEMA, plus a few additional feet of freeboard for additional levels of safety. The zoning changes that have... The zoning changes that happened allow property owners to measure height from that flood elevation level, which removes a potential barrier, the zoning height limits, from their reconstruction or redesign efforts. That's one of many things that was changed about the zoning resolution in 2013. In 2015, there was a separate suite of rule changes that allowed property owners with pre-existing non-conformances and non-compliances to rebuild their sandy-damaged homes. That does have a five-year sunset period. And the 2013 text has a sunset period after the new flood maps are adopted by FEMA sometime in 2024 is expected. The Department of City Planning is currently working on a proposal that would make those existing rules that are on the books permanent, but also build on lessons learned from the past six and a half years since Hurricane Sandy. Since we've observed so much post-Sandy construction happening in the floodplain, there are ways to update and improve the rules to make them even better and to expand the geography in which they would apply to ensure that a broader area of the city can use these voluntary rules to make themselves safer if there's another flood.
And I'll just note that the commission can expect that next year will be coming with formal zoning changes. We're calling it zoning for resiliency. It will be a citywide text amendment.
Yeah. And then I just have one more. And if I have a bunch of questions, I'll just ask one more. And if we go around and there's no more, then I'll ask again. So my last question for the moment would be on the yard expansion. So have the yard expansion, have the homeowners been identified for the yard expansion? Or is it anticipated that one or the other neighbor may buy the yard?
The homeowners for the yard expansion program have not yet been identified. What they have done is some initial analysis to determine who can actually acquire the properties. You have to be an abutting property owner to be eligible to acquire the property as a yard expansion.
Okay. And I have another question, but I'll come back after that about the yard expansion. I'll come back.
Commissioner Lewis. I just want to confirm, so all the properties at this point are vacant? Is that the case?
They will be delivered vacant, whether they're planned for resilient housing or resilient open space or permanent open space. Some of the properties still have structures on them and they're in the process of being demoed.
Okay. So there might be a couple that have occupancy at this moment in time.
I don't believe any of the properties are currently occupied.
Okay.
Three have not been acquired yet. If they're not acquired by the time of commission hearing, we'll remove them from the program.
So three properties have not?
Sorry. I mean, come on, 141. I just want to say the fact that you guys put together something with so many boroughs and so many tax locks and, you know, I can just imagine the spreadsheet and the matrix that you came up with to figure this out. So you really should be congratulated on that. So I'm sure there's lots of details.
You don't want to know about the hours-long meetings.
I believe it. I really do.
Lot by lot by lot basis.
Yeah, no, I believe it. Okay. So there might be a few. Thanks.
There might be a few. And if they remain in their current state, they'll be removed from the program.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Burnham.
I just want to say, I know that Build It Back's been a complicated and challenging program, and I just commend all of you that have been involved in it. But I'm just curious, is the end in sight? Are we, are we in the process? Is it going to wind up one day?
I believe the figure is 99% of the projects or buildings that are in the Build It Back program have reached their completion date, whether it's an elevated building or reimbursement check or being part of this acquisition and buyout program. So we're very close to the end. And of course, there were a lot of lessons learned.
That's single-family.
That's the single family. So the one to four family program is 99% complete.
We'll be seeing you again.
Yes.
Okay. Then back to Commissioner Marine.
I just want to go back to the side yard for a minute. So is there going to be a restricted declaration on that side yard? And is, I know that homes can get built, but let's say a homeowner wants to put a shed or some ancillary structure, is that going to be prevented based on where they are or their designation?
By deed restriction, there are no permanent structures like sheds permitted on the sites designated as permanent open space. And it will be enforced through that deed restriction by the city.
Okay. Is it possible that maybe a yard can be split by two homeowners, suppose each, once someone, let's say both homeowners have an interest, can the side yard then be split so that they can both have a piece of it? Or is it going to go to whoever has the biggest buck?
I can get back to you with an answer for that question.
Thank you.
Other questions. Commissioner Rumpershaw.
I'm going to ask you there. A question, are there storm sewers fronting these properties?
Many, so which properties?
The reason I bring it up is because it's in a flood zone. And when you're in a flood zone, you can't put dry well. So I'm just curious how they're going to handle the storm drainage for these lots. I know the building's going to get demo, it gets backfilled and...
Sure. So that was part of the evaluation for sites slated for housing redevelopment is that they have the ability to hook up to the sewer network. Sites that were otherwise constrained are, the end use would be open space.
Other questions? It's going to be interesting seeing a couple of hundred projects moving through you simultaneously. Yes, Commissioner Marine.
One last question, I'm sorry. So on the acquisition side, homeowners that do acquire property are not necessarily restricted to HPD's Open Door term sheet. Is that correct? Or is it that they purchase and they are restricted to HPD's Open Door term sheet?
Certain sites, HPD will pursue the Open Door Program to redevelop them as affordable housing sites. Other sites will be sold to private owners through private auction for redevelopment without HPD's program.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Brendan.
Other questions? Okay. The application is certified. Thank you to the whole team.
Okay. The second item on our agenda, page 153, is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Manhattan, Community District Seven. Our presenter is Nabila Mayak.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is an application by CPW Retail South LLC for a zoning map amendment to add a C-25 commercial overlay to an existing R-10A district along Central Park West between West 62nd and 63rd Streets to a depth of 100 feet at 25 Central Park West, a landmarked mixed-use building constructed in 1931. The proposed C-25 overlay would bring three existing legal non-conforming commercial units on the ground floor into conformance and would allow for the applicant to apply for a special permit with the BSA for a physical cultural establishment, a PCE, for one of the commercial units. So the development site outlined in red is an existing 33-story landmarked mixed-use building known as the Century Apartments. The site is currently zoned R-10A with a small portion on its western end zoned C-47 and located within the special Lincoln Square District. The building runs along the entire length of the block along Central Park West, and the twin towers of the building rise 300 feet above the street line. The proposed rezoning area in the black dotted line encompasses a portion of the existing R-10A district to a depth of 100 feet. 25 Central Park West is the southernmost building within the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, which is located between West 62nd and 96th Streets. The district is distinguished by twin tower buildings such as the development site. The surrounding area contains a mix of residential, office, hotel, retail, and community facility uses. And buildings range from townhouses to high-rise residential and hotel buildings. The area is zoned R-10A, C-47, C-66 to the south, and R-8 to the north. There's only one other building on the project block, 1884 Broadway. The building is a 32-story mixed-use building and is located completely within the C-47 zoning district and is unaffected by the proposed map change. The area is well-served by public transit with a 59th Street Columbus Circle subway stop servicing the ACE, BD, 1, 2, and 3 lines, and is located two blocks south of the site. So these photos feature views of the existing 33-story building. They show views of the building from West 63rd Street. Two of the three ground floor commercial spaces are located along 63rd. And you can see the corner entrance to one of the commercial units in photo number six. These are views of the building frontage from Central Park West. You can see the corner entrance for the third commercial unit in picture number nine. And these are views of the building from West 62nd Street. The third commercial unit is located along this street with the corner entrance at Central Park West. So the development site is an approximately 50,000-square-foot lot improved with a 550,000-square-foot building that contains 422 dwelling units on floors two to 33, three commercial units on the ground floor, and 13 use group four medical offices on the ground floor as well. The proposed rezoning will bring the existing legal non-conforming commercial uses into conformance and will allow for the applicant to apply for a PCE special permit with a BSA for one of the commercial spaces. The proposed PCE would potentially occupy the southeastern commercial unit at the corner of Central Park West and 62nd Street, which currently has approximately 3,000 square feet of floor area on the ground floor. This unit is currently a pharmacy that has plans to relocate. The other two commercial units along 63rd Street are a salon and dry cleaners that don't have plans to vacate. The proposed rezoning would affect the three commercial units, three medical office units, and small portions of four medical offices, as you can see by the red dashed line. So the 100-foot overlay is to the right of the dashed line. The proposed zoning map amendment to add a C-25 overlay to the existing R-10A district would be mapped for a depth of 100 feet along Central Park West between 62nd and 63rd Streets. The commercial uses on the proposed development site are local retail and personal service uses that primarily serve the residential area. The proposed overlay would allow the applicant to separately pursue a PCE special permit and in general permit a wider range of service uses and home maintenance establishments. The maximum permitted commercial FAR within the C-25 overlay is two, and the C-47 portion of the site would remain unaffected. The applicant seeks a zoning map amendment to add a C-25 overlay to an existing R-10A zoning district. The applicant has asserted that a C-25 overlay at this location would transition the intensive commercial uses of 8th Avenue and Columbus Circle to the primarily residential character of Central Park West north of the site and bring longstanding commercial uses into conformance. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Levin.
I'm assuming they must have a proposed tenant in mind here. You don't go through this exercise if you don't have an end user. Do we know what kind of a physical cultural establishment is anticipated?
Yeah, so they're thinking about a yoga studio here.
Pretty classy corner for a yoga studio.
Yeah.
And would that occupy the entire commercial space and the, I mean, the ground floor space and the cellar as well?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Application is certified.
Thank you.
Item three on our agenda, page 170, is a certification of a UDT designation disposition of city-owned property, zoning map and zoning text amendments, and special permit in Brooklyn Community District 15. Alexandra Patty Diaz is our presenter.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, on behalf of Help USA, proposes a set of land use actions to facilitate the redevelopment of an existing 192-unit family homeless shelter to four new buildings with approximately 324 units and a new homeless shelter building with approximately 195 units in East New York, Brooklyn. The actions requested are a UDT designation project approval, disposition of city-owned property, a zoning map amendment, and a zoning tax amendment to designate an MAH area, and a zoning help, a zoning special permit pursuant to 74743 to waive bulk regulations. This project is located in Community District Five, East New York, in Brooklyn, at 515 Blake Avenue between Hinsell Street and Snidicker Avenue. Genesis Homes, a residential building developed in 1991 and operated by an affiliate of Help USA occupies the entire block directly to the south of the project area across Blake Avenue. Immediately to the west of Genesis Homes, across Snidicker Avenue, there is another Help USA affiliated operated building, which opened in 2010 and provides apartments for formerly homeless families with half of the units set aside for homeless veterans. Nitea Unity Plaza and Long Island Baptist Houses campuses are located to the east of the project area. New York City Police Housing Bureau is located on the south side of Soder Avenue to the east of the project area, which also is located daycare, pre-kindergarten facility, and PS 328, the Hyde School. East New York Industrial Business Zone is located directly to the north of the project area across Soder Avenue. The surrounding area is served by the Soder Avenue stop on the L subway line, which runs along the elevated tracks on Vincinder Avenue and adjacent to the open tracks located below court level serving the Long Island Railroad. The B-14 bus runs in both directions along Soder Avenue. The area is generally a low-to-medium-density neighborhood containing a mix of residential, commercial, and community facility uses. The areas mainly map R-6 with a C-23 commercial overlay mapped to a depth of 150 feet on either side of Blake Avenue. A C-43 district is mapped along Soder Avenue, both sides, to a depth of 150 feet. The area to the north of the project area features predominantly industrial uses and vacant land, and it's map M-14. The area along the elevated tracks on the L line, map M-11, is industrial in nature, comprising auto body shops and warehouses. The project area encompasses all of Block 3766, which is bounded by Soder Avenue to the north, Blake Avenue to the south, Hinsell Street to the east, and Snidicker Avenue to the west. Lot 49 is a 5,000-square-foot parcel located on the southeast corner of the block. It is occupied by a four-story residential building, which is privately owned. Lot 1, the development site, is approximately 95,000 square feet and has frontages along all of the four streets bounding the block. It is currently occupied by Help One Plaza, a three-story family shelter complex built in 1988 and operated by an affiliate of Help USA. It includes 182 shelter units, a daycare, and early childhood education facility, staff offices, small hospital, and an outdoor central courtyard with play equipment. The proposed development will replace the existing Help One Plaza shelter complex on the development site with approximately 387,000-square-foot mixed-use development consisting of four new buildings, a shelter, an affordable housing including supportive units, and two affordable housing buildings. Building A will be located at the northern end of the development site and will consist of approximately 195 family shelter units. Building B is proposed on the east side of the development site, immediately south of the building A along Hinsell Street, and will consist of approximately 70 affordable residential units, including supportive units. Building C will be located immediately south of Building B along Hinsell Street and will consist of approximately 79 affordable residential units. Building D is proposed along the western side of the development site with, and will include 176 affordable residential units. I will walk you through each building. Building A will rise to a height of nine stories and will contain approximately 179,000 square feet of community facility, consisting of 195 family shelter units, including 12,000 set aside for a daycare facility, and approximately 1,800 square feet. set aside for a daycare facility, and approximately 1,800 square feet of ground floor retail space, fronting Soder Avenue. Amenities will include children's playroom, parenting room, learning center, and a computing training center on the ground floor, a multipurpose room, and laundry rooms on the cellar. Enclosed storage for 31 bicycles will be provided in the cellar level. Building B will rise to a height of eight stories and will contain approximately 40,500 square feet of residential floor area, consisting of approximately 70 units of affordable housing, including approximately 42 supportive units, 28 affordable housing units for families and singles, plus one superintendent unit, and accessory onsite social services for the building residents. Amenities in the building B include a community room, and a multipurpose room, and a laundry room. Enclosed storage for 36 bicycles will be provided on the cellar level. Building C will rise to a height of six stories and will contain approximately 58,000 square feet of residential floor area, consisting of approximately 79 units of affordable housing. Amenities in Building C will include multipurpose room, exercise room, and laundry room. Enclosed storage for 40 bicycles will be provided at the cellar level. Building D will rise to a height between six to 10 stories. The building will contain approximately 140,000 square feet of residential floor area, consisting of approximately 176 units of affordable housing, and approximately 2,100 square feet of retail space located fronting Blake Avenue. Amenities in the building will include multipurpose room, community room, exercise room, and laundry room. Enclosed storage for ADA bicycles will be provided on the cellar level. At the center of the development site, in the rear area of each building and aligned with the cellar level, there will be a shared landscape courtyard containing approximately 26,000 square feet of outdoor open space. This space will provide both active and passive recreational uses for occupants of the proposed development and will be improved with trees, planting settings, and play areas. Approximately 7,000 square feet of the courtyard will be utilized by occupants of Building A. The remaining, approximately of 19,000 square feet, will be utilized by the remaining three buildings. Building heights will range from six to 10 stories. The shelter will rise up to nine-story building. The uppermost three stories will be set back approximately 25 feet from Soder Avenue. Affordable housing buildings, B, C, and D, will range from six to 10 stories. Heights, portion to, higher heights of the development will be located towards the avenue, stepping down and the lower portions towards the side streets. Setbacks, facade recesses, as well as variation on facade treatment, will be provided throughout the development. Building D will include ground floor masonette apartments with front doors and front jars areas opening directly to Snedeker Avenue. In order to facilitate the project, HPD is requesting four actions. A designation of an urban development action area, and approval of an urban development action area project, and disposition of a city-owned property of just the development site, block 3766, lot 1. The development site will be conveyed to a developer selected by Help, by HPD. HPD is seeking an approval of a zoning map amendment for the whole project area, block 3766. The proposed zoning district would include an R-7D C-24 district located within 150 feet of Soder Avenue on the northern end of the block, another R-7D C-14 district located within 100 feet of Blake Avenue at the southern end of the block, and an R-6A district covering the remaining mid-block portion of the zoning lot between the two R-7 with the commercial overlays district. The R-7D zoning district will facilitate medium-density residential developments with an FAR up to 5.6 with an MIH. Base height range between 60 to 85 feet, above which the building must set back before rising to its maximum height of 115 feet. Mapping a C-24 overlay paired with an R-7D at the depth of 150 feet along Soder Avenue will mandate no residential uses on the ground floor. And the R-6A zoning district will facilitate medium-density residential developments with an FAR up to 3.6 and an MIH, with MIH. Base height range between 40 to 65 feet, above which the building must set back before rising to its maximum height of 85 feet. HPD proposes to map a project area as an MIH area by adding the area to the maps in Appendix F of the zoning resolution. It will require permanently affordable housing within the new residential development enlargements and conversions. Option 1 is the one selected. The proposed large-scale special permit will, it's proposed to only apply to the development site. HPD is seeking this special permit that will allow the distribution of floor area across four proposed buildings that share a single zoning lot with disregard of the zoning district boundaries, as set for in 74743. Pursuant to this special permit, up to 20,000 square feet of community facility floor area from the southern R-7D C-14 district, and up to 3,000 square feet of community facility floor area from the mid-block R-6A district, will be transferred to the northern R-7D C-24 district to facilitate the development of the shelter. The statement of findings provided by the applicant can be found in your briefing package. Envelope that will be approved with a special prem, with a special permit rises up to 103 feet on the building D along Blake Avenue, 97 feet along Soder Avenue corresponding to the shelter building, 85 feet along Hinsell Street corresponding to the supportive housing building, and 68 feet on the remainder of the site. Color building represents the proposed development, and the dark boundaries represent the envelope to be approved with a special permit. That concludes my presentation and open to any questions.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Marine.
Alejandro, thank you for the presentation. I'm just going to ask some questions about Building A, which is the shelter building. How are the units in that building configured? What are the size of the units and what exactly? I'm asking the question because I've been one, a real proponent about having shelters without kitchens and things like that, and suitable, really suitable accommodations for its tenants. So, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get at is, what's the unit, what are the unit sizes? What's the configuration of those units as shelters?
I don't have the breakdown of the unit sizes for the shelters, but I will, the applicants are in the room, and I will instruct them to explain them more during the hearing.
Thank you, I appreciate that. There is also 1,800 square feet of retail proposed for Building A. What type of retail is envisioned there?
The retail renters have not been identified still by the applicant team. However, they are going to keep the rents very low for it to be affordable for businesses within the community.
Is there, is there any intention of, of like, maybe a supermarket, a deli, or something like that? Because this is a huge, look, I got to tell you, this is a huge endeavor and really, really warranted and necessary, and I get that. But I'm just trying to see if there's any other retail in the community that would, you know, facilitate uses that are not intended for this building, like a supermarket, things like that. Not, not another 99 cent store, which really I know communities don't want and not necessary. And then I guess my last question for now would be, on Building B, you have 42 units of supportive housing. Is it intended that there'll be supportive services in the building and security and things like that?
Yes, they will be provided onsite in both ground floor and cellar levels.
Okay, thank you, Alejandro.
Commissioner Deloos.
Hi. When this comes back, it'd just be great, I think, to have a better understanding overall of all the programming at all the different sites and how they may or may not interact with one another.
Okay.
Thanks.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just following up on Commissioner Marine's question. I'd be interested when it comes back in knowing about the unit size breakdown, particularly in Buildings C and D as well.
I, I have.
Oh, you have that, okay.
I can provide that information.
Was that in the appendix on the?
No, it was just provided by the applicant team. This is, I must clarify, this is all draft, but since you asked about Buildings C and D, those are the ones I'm going to read. Building C is proposed to have 17 studios, 31 bedrooms, 31 one-bedroom units, and 19 two-bedroom units, and 12 three-bedroom units. Building D will have 19 studios, 81 one-bedroom units, 48 two-bedroom units, and 27 three-bedroom units, and one for a superintendent.
So, thank you for that. So, I guess it skews toward the studios and one-bedrooms, and the question is whether that, you know, how that matches up with need in the neighborhood. Is it going to be serving, is there a greater need for family-sized units? But we'll hear from the community on that one. Will MIH apply to each building individually? So, will it be separately? Yes. Yeah.
We can confirm that with HPD.
And I realize that may just be a rhetorical question, given the nature of the developer here, where I think we can be pretty confident that affordability is assured regardless of MIH. I'd also observe that the current building, built in 1988, is all used up after just 30 years. It really tells you something about how we build in the city. I hope we do a better job here. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, I get it. It's just an observation of, I hope we're doing better. And on the doing better, I do have a design concern about Building D. It's got 350 feet of frontage on Snedeker Avenue, and that strikes me as a real opportunity for some design intervention to be sure that we're not, you know, that it's not just a long slab. The renderings show some variation in materials, which is how you would solve that problem, but I think it's really important that that looks like a active, inviting, not monolithic frontage. So, I'll be interested in seeing more information from the architects when it comes back.
Right. What we have been working with them is also for recesses along the facade, responding to the two-story residential buildings that are across the street, and also the height of the building at that point is reflecting of that. But I will take note and get back to that.
No, it seems as if it's been, been on, on people's minds, but the more we can find out at the hearing, that'd be good.
Great. I'll also note on that being, we've, our urban design team, our Brooklyn office, have been working with the architect. We think there's a ways to go that it could be improved from a design perspective because it's a lot of building on the block. Commissioner Marine.
I just want to piggyback on that concern. I see that there's a couple of, quite a few masonettes entrances there. What, what is the intention for the fencing in front of their landscaping? I agree with Anna, it should be warm and inviting, and you do have the homes across the street, so it should be something that liven's up the street. So, that would be interesting to see what happens.
It is proposed to have some landscape in front of the masonettes as the building gets recessed, and the masonettes is something that also we have been hearing from the council member of the district that responds to what the character of the community is. So, it's bringing also that into the development.
Sure, and it also liven's up that street with a lot of eyes on the street, a lot of walking back and forth, and that's really, really a nice design detail.
Other questions? Commissioner Bernie.
Really, just on the same theme, I mean, are there entrances along Snedeker here?
Yes.
Okay, so, I would be a little bit concerned, I understand the idea of the setbacks, but some of these spaces, they need to be very carefully designed. I noticed in some of the drawings, all of the little dot, dot, dots, as if there was grass there or something, that will not last more than 10 minutes. So, the way you articulate and design those entrances, and I understand the intent, it just needs to be carefully detailed, and I guess we'll see it when it comes back.
Other questions? I'll note, and this is for the benefit of the applicant team, that it was explained that it was anticipated in that large interior courtyard to have separate outdoor spaces for the shelter versus the apartments, and I don't understand the theory behind it, and so would be interested in why we're creating separate outdoor spaces. Okay, with that, the application is certified.
The fourth item on our agenda, page 209, is a certification of a site selection and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District 5. Alexandra Patty Diaz is again our presenter.
Good afternoon again. Let's complicate the project this time. This is a proposed action by the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation and New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services for a site selection and acquisition of a property by the city to expand the Green Gems Garden in East New York. The prior actions on the site are related to the East New York rezoning approved by the commission. This is located in Community District 5, in the Cypress Hill neighborhood, surrounded by one and two family homes, as well as multifamily residential buildings. The area is well-served by city and non-city facilities. Parks within a mile include the City Line Park on Fontaine Avenue and Atlantic Avenues, and a Sparandale Brothers Playground on Liberty and Cleveland Street. The area is well-served also by public amenities and institutions. Euclid Avenue subway station serving the AC line is located three blocks southwest of the project area. Several bus lines serve the area such as Q7, Q8, B13, and B14 bus lines. Brooklyn Community District 5 is identified as having an open space ratio of 1.3 acres of open space per 1,000 residents, comparison to the 1.5 acres of open space citywide. Green Gems Garden is located on the block 4191 and encompasses 13 lots of, on the northern-east intersection between Fontaine and Glamour Avenues. The total area is 19,900 square feet, and it has been used as a garden since 1994. City-owned lots that are about the development site are lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 106. The total frontage of the garden along Fontaine Avenue is 135 feet, and 180 feet along Glamour Avenue. The development site with the red boundary on the image is located on 151 Fontaine Avenue. It currently functions as part of the garden. The total area of this lot is 2,500 square feet with a 25-feet frontage along Fontaine Avenue. The proposed use of the development site is to be formally added to the adjacent Green Gems Community Garden. There are no plans of additional structures to be built on site, consequently no change on the bill form of the whole project area. Lot 6 will be licensed through the Parks-Green Thumb program jointly with the rest of the lots, and it must adhere to the license requirements as the number of hours open per week, the signage, and the posting of the activities. This garden in particular grows fruits and vegetables in 24 rice planting beds. There are 15 fruit trees inside. The garden also has chickens and rabbits, and they use these animals and the orchard culture as part of educational programs. And for you to know that this coming fall, the gardeners, in collaboration with Green Thumb, are running a winter chicken care workshop. This concludes my presentation.
I love the notion of the chickens and rabbits. Any comments, questions from the commission? Any comments, questions from the commission? A very easy, oh, Commissioner Marine.
I heard that they're leasing, you have, there's a portion of the presentation where you say you're leasing part of Lot 6, I think, or, I'm not sure what 6 referred to, but who is the lease with, and who's maintaining these areas?
Lot 6 is privately owned, which is the one that is subject to this action, but in terms of who is maintaining this lot, since it is used as part of the garden, without any boundary between the city-owned lots and this lot, is maintained by the gardeners. So this action is just to have the complete ownership of the garden.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. The application is certified.
Item 5 on the agenda, page 219, is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 12. Amrita Mahesh is our presenter.
This is a private application requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone an R6-C13 district to a C42 district to facilitate the legalization of an existing three-story, approximately 3,890-square-foot commercial building in the Sunset Park neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 12. The project site is located in the southeastern portion of Sunset Park, near the borders of Borough Park and Dyker Heights neighborhoods. The project site is located along 8th Avenue, a thriving corridor that consists of predominantly three-story commercial and mixed-use buildings. 8th Avenue is lined with businesses, grocery stores, restaurants, and community organizations, and is often referred to as an extension of Chinatown in Manhattan. The surrounding area includes a mix of multifamily buildings and row houses along mid-block portions. Immediately to the south, there is an M11 zoning district that contains a mix of parking, commercial, industrial, and auto-oriented uses. The project area is well-served by public transit, including bus and subway service. The project block is mapped with an R6 and R6-C13 district on the northern portion, and an M11 district on the southern portion. R6 residential districts are widely mapped in built-up medium-density areas. Non-contextual R6 districts have two options for bulk compliance: the standard height-factor regulations, which produce small multifamily buildings on small zoning lots, and on larger lots, tall buildings that are set back from the street, or the optional quality housing regulations, which produce high-lot coverage buildings within height limits. The floor area ratio in R6 districts ranges from 0.78 to 2.43. C13 districts are commercial overlay districts mapped within residence districts along streets that serve local retail needs. When mapped in R6 through R10 districts, the maximum commercial FAR is 2.0. The southern boundary of the proposed project area has been coincident with an M11 zoning district since 1961. M11 districts are manufacturing districts, which permit light industrial uses, with maximum permitted FARs of 1.0 for industrial-commercial uses, and 2.4 for certain community facility uses. The proposed development site is an interior lot with approximately 20 feet of frontage on 8th Avenue. It is improved with a three-story building and is currently occupied entirely with commercial uses. Lots 6, 7, and 10, with frontage on 8th Avenue, also consist of three-story buildings with a mix of uses that include stores, and nonprofit offices, and dwelling units. Lot 11 is a recently constructed seven-story commercial and community facility building. Lot 13 is a recently constructed six-story mixed-use building, occupied by stores, community facility, and residential uses. Lot 14 is a two-story residential building. As mentioned earlier, the project site is improved with a three-story, approximately 3,890-square-foot building occupied entirely with commercial uses. This exceeds the maximum permitted as-of-right floor area for commercial uses, which is 3,200 square feet, or 2.0 FAR. The certificate of occupancy is for a mixed-use building with a commercial on-the-ground floor and dwelling units on the second and third floors. The applicant is seeking the zoning amendment, in part, to legalize the upper two floors. The applicant proposes to rezone the project area from an R6-C13 zoning district to a C42 zoning district to facilitate the legalization of the applicant property. C42 districts allow for a maximum commercial FAR of 3.4. Buildings may rise to a height of 60 feet or four stories before setting back within the first 20 feet along a narrow street, or 15 feet along a wide street. A sky-exposure plane applies above a height of 60 feet. The proposed rezoning boundary is 150 feet in depth, and would replace the existing commercial overlay. The C42 district has an R6 residential equivalent, consistent with the existing zoning district. The proposed zoning change will allow the existing commercial and mixed-use buildings, both on 8th Avenue and 60th Street within the proposed project area, to remain as they currently exist, but with the potential for additional commercial FAR. The proposed zoning would also allow for a broader range of uses to be permitted as-of-right. The applicant states that such a change would be in line with the surrounding neighborhood, as the buildings that face 8th Avenue, particularly those north of 60th Street, are almost entirely three-story commercial and mixed-use buildings. The existing zoning has been in place in 1961 and does not reflect existing conditions along the corridor or current neighborhood trends. The applicant also believes that the proposed zoning would accommodate for additional commercial capacity to bolster 8th Avenue, a well-established commercial corridor. Thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Questions from the commission? Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we know if the applicant ever occupied the building as of pursuant to code, which is to say, did he ever have residential uses in the upper floors?
So the applicant purchased the property in 2016, and they purchased it vacant, and then fitted out the upper floors for offices, because they believe that was the best use for the corridor. They purchased it vacant, but prior to that, we believe it would have been used for dwelling unit purposes, the upper two floors.
Did the applicant know of the permissible use when he acquired it?
I can follow up. I'm not sure at this time, I can follow up.
I think that's a relevant question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
So really, can, when this comes back, could we find out how many residential uses are currently existing within the project area?
Okay.
And if any of them are rent-stabilized or rent-controlled?
Okay, I will follow up with that.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I think since you referred to the applicant's argument that allowing three floors of commercial use would be consistent with other uses along 8th Avenue, I'd be interested in knowing the extent to which that's true. How many of the buildings, you know, say, within five blocks, or whatever is the, you know, logically thought of stretch of this area, has that degree of commercial use, or is it more what zoning allows here, which is ground-floor commercial with residential above?
Okay, I can get back to you.
Okay.
Just to add to the other question about, sorry, just to add to the question about whether the applicant knew, if it was allowed, they did apply to Department of Buildings, and they were rejected, and that's when they sent us, they sent the applicant to Department of City Planning to correct the conformance, so.
This was after they converted it?
After they fixed it out.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and did DOB issue permits for the alteration of the building to convert it to all commercial?
I can follow up.
And then, on the uses on upper floors, we don't have exact numbers on surrounding dwelling units, but just by walking down the street and looking at some of the stuff, it looks like there might be non-conforming uses on multiple buildings.
Yeah, so.
We'll try and take a deeper look as well.
Yeah.
It's a little difficult to tell.
Right, but, yeah, so we're being confronted with a whole thicket of issues, you know, where the rules on the books may depart from what's happening on the ground, and what the right answer may not be exactly obvious. Thank you.
Other questions? It'll be interesting to see what comes back from the community on this, because in many ways, one sees throughout Asia, multi-story retail being quite, quite popular and successful, and we've seen it in other of our Asian neighborhoods, if one looks at Flushing, where there's very successful up-to-five-story retail. And so it's going to be interesting how people view the housing versus bustling two-, three-story retail discussion going. Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
Item 6 on the agenda.
I'm sorry, Brian, Commissioner Deloos wanted to make one more comment.
I just had a thought, because this is the border between Community Board 7 and the Community Board 12, it just occurred to me, and whatever precedent that might be set here could raise questions there, so I, it might be, at least as a courtesy, to let Community Board 7 know that this is being considered.
We've communicated that to the applicant at the ID meeting stage itself, we had suggested that to them.
Oh, you did, all right, thank you. Okay, sorry to.
A similar dynamic in.
It's literally, the Community Board district line goes down the middle of 8th Avenue, so it's really the east and west side of 8th Avenue.
I know that this question was asked, but I'd like to, elaborating on Commissioner Knuckles's question about when this converted to commercial, I mean, what, I'm a little bit confused as to what perpetuated the need to go to the Buildings Department if there was commercial there already. Were they legitimizing the commercial space? Were they adding on? So a little bit more information on that would be really helpful.
Sure, so the certificate of occupancy is for dwelling units, so they went to get to correct that.
I realize that, but it appears that they may have been commercial, which promulgated them going to the Buildings Department, so I'd like to know when that commercial started, if that would be possible.
Sure, I can do that.
Commissioner Rumpershod.
Just chiming in on Commissioner Marine's comment.
Hopeful for the applicants.
I just, yeah, I just checked the DOB website, see that the CVO was issued June 14, 2017, so I would assume they would have known that for residential, no, for residential on the upper floors, a ground-floor commercial, so that's relatively recent, in my opinion, this girl.
Thanks for the on-the-minute research.
Thank you.
Okay, last chance, for real. Okay, now the application is certified.
Thank you.
Okay, item 6 on the agenda, page 233, it's a certification for a site selection and acquisition in Bronx Community District 9. Manny Legarres is here to present.
Okay, good afternoon, commissioners. The 1155, 1157 Commerce Avenue, thank you. The applicants are Department of Sanitation of New York and Department of Citywide Administrative Services. They're seeking a site selection and acquisition of privately-owned property to facilitate a temporary relocation for a mechanics facility at 1155 Commerce Avenue, and a new facility at 1157 Commerce Avenue. The past uses on the site are a beer distributor and granite shop. Now, in August of 2011, the agency submitted an emergency space request because their building, which houses Community District 9, 10, and 11 garage, is in a bad state of repair. This building is located at 800 to 850 Zariga Avenue. Subsequently, in 2014, DASNE did obtain a license to use 1155 Commerce Avenue to temporarily locate their mechanics facility. The site is located in the Castle Hill section of Community District Number 9 in the South Bronx. It's on the block founded by Gleason Avenue to the north, Commerce Avenue to the east, Powell Avenue to the south, and Zariga Avenue to the west. The site is outlined in red. It's approximately 36,000 square feet, privately owned. It currently contains two buildings, the 1155 and 1157 Commerce Avenue. The site is adjacent to the Castle Hill Little League Field, which is under the jurisdiction of the Parks Department. The Castle Hill Little League organization has been in the area for approximately 50 years. To the south of that, there's a small triangle there on the same block that contains manufacturing and commercial uses. The area itself is within the Zariga Industrial Business Zone, Zone M1. And this, you have a picture here of the existing facility at the bottom, 800-850, and it's approximately seven blocks away from the 1155, 1157 Commerce Avenue. It's within an M1 zone, as I mentioned before, predominantly industrial and commercial, and you look to the west, you do have an R5 zoning district, which allows for residential uses. This is a view looking north, facing north, at 1155 Commerce Avenue, which, as I mentioned earlier, is, has been at this location since 2014. It's a one-story building, used for the mechanics, they repair the trucks, rigs, agency vehicles, they have a staff of 12, 11 mechanics, and one supervisor, and they also repair vehicles for DEP, approximately four to five vehicles per day. The one on the right, it is adjacent to 1155, is 1157. This building is currently vacant and will be demolished. This is a view of the, looking west at the Castle Hill Little League, and the first photo on the right, you have the 1155. This is the interior of 1155 Commerce Avenue, again, where they repair the vehicles. And this is a, their site plan, superimposed on an aerial, which actually shows what they're proposing to do for the 1155, which is the one at the center. They're going to construct six new bays, bringing everything up to 10. They'll also be providing accessory parking, A-spaces. The building on the right, 1157 Commerce Avenue, they're going to be office spaces, as well as locker rooms, new bathrooms, new kitchen. You also have a 25-by-50-foot washing bay, after the vehicles are repaired, they will be cleaned at this location. The Department of Sanitation has stated that they'll be at this location temporarily for up to eight years, until the facility at 800-850 Zariga Avenue is reconstructed. And this is their site plan, which actually shows you the curb cuts onto the 1155, there's an existing curb cut there, and on the right, upper right there, is a proposed curb cut. And I'll leave you with just a photo of the old facility, which, according to DASNE, is in dire need of repair, and that's why they had to relocate the mechanics. And also with the mechanics, I forgot to mention that there's an additional 12 staff from the, their Bureau of Maintenance, which will be at that location. Are there any questions?
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Manny, is this a city-owned facility?
Well, yes, yes. City-owned facility, yes. And the ones that, the other ones are leased.
Commissioner Marine.
Manny, so, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
What's going to happen, is the 800-805 building being proposed to be renovated, torn down, rebuilt? What's the story?
It's going to be demolished and rebuilt.
Okay.
And that'll, again, that's why they're at the other location for one to eight years, so within that time, the construction of the new, of this building would occur.
And I know Commissioner Knuckles asked a question about the building, but is the site also owned by the City of New York, or just, or, how does, what's the ownership of this, of the 800-805?
Well, as far as I know, it's owned by the City of New York.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, but I'll double check, just to make sure.
No, I'm just, I really, I'm asking only because this is a very interesting parcel, and if it's going to be redeveloped very nicely, then I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I think that there are other issues and other questions that I can ask, but I won't get there.
I see.
I just want to make sure, and then at the new site, you did mention something about the car, the vehicles being washed after they're fixed.
Correct.
Do any of these, and I don't know, because I haven't heard from the community, and we haven't been there yet, have there been any issues of smells from the folks who use the park? I know this has probably come afterwards, but I guess I have to ask that question, because that's one of my concerns.
Okay, I will get back to you on that.
Right, if trucks are washed before they get there, you know, because there's going to be smells, so we want to make sure that we're nice neighbors.
That's true.
Thank you, Manny.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Eady.
Thanks. Just eyeballing the two sites, the temporary site seems to be very, much smaller than the existing facility, and, you know, is that due to greater efficiencies based on the new building, or how are they able to move one function from a location?
Okay, that's.
Multiple sides, times the size.
Yeah, that's not the only function. This, the building at 1155 is approximately 18,000 square feet. And 1157 is 8,000, approximately square feet, 26,000 square feet of floor area. They are not relocating all their units that are currently at the other location. So it's going to be like a piecemeal.
It's going to be phased?
Sort of, but what I'll do, just to confirm, I'll speak with DASNE. They do have representatives here, they're taking notes. And I will get back to you on that when it comes back from the Community Board and Borough President.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Well, I had a question related to aesthetics. I wanted to ask my colleague, Commissioner Bernie, with these new facilities, are they under a new set of design guidelines like we've seen in some of the more recent sanitation facilities?
There isn't a sort of template for the DSNY. I mean, some of the more recent buildings they've done have been much better. The one they did on the West Side Highway with the salt shed was part of the Design Excellence Program. I assume this would go to DDC and go through that process, but that would be up to the Public Design Commission, I expect, to make sure they get quality out of the completed building. We don't see, we don't see a design, we just see site selection, I suppose, right?
Right. Although we can, in our reports, urge attention to design. And picking up on that theme, I would urge that we get some information about the screening of the Little League Field that's adjacent.
Yes, yes.
Other questions? Then the application is certified.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, page 248, is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District One. Blake Montieth is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application to facilitate the development of a new mixed residential and commercial building in Astoria, Community District One, Queens. The owner of a development site at 4401 Northern Boulevard is applying to rezone one Northern Boulevard block front from a light industrial M1-1 zoning district to higher-density R7X and R6B zoning districts with a C24 commercial overlay. The applicant is also applying to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area as part of these actions. The requested actions would allow for a new 10-story building with about 335 total residential units, including 100 permanently affordable units. The development would also include a large retail space on the ground floor for the applicant's automotive showroom. The rezoning area is located on Northern Boulevard between 44th and 45th Streets, northeast of Sunnyside Yard, and southwest of the Woodside Houses night show campus. The Steinway Street M and R subway station is located about a five-to-10-minute walk to the west, connecting the site directly to Manhattan and much of Queens. As you'll recall, the commission recently considered an application to the east on 34th Avenue. The development site is shown here in red. Northern Boulevard is a wide street, as defined by the zoning resolution. Automotive, light industrial, and big-box retail uses are concentrated along this portion of Northern Boulevard. And an established medium-density residential neighborhood is located to the north. The northern frontage of Northern Boulevard, shown with an example here on the left, primarily includes smaller non-residential lots, while the southern frontage, shown on the right, primarily includes large lots with automotive sales and big-box retail establishments. Three-story multifamily buildings built in the 1920s are located west of the development site on 44th Street. Two-story light industrial and commercial buildings are located to the east of the development site on 45th Street. And two six-story buildings are located north of the development site on 34th Avenue. Looking at the rezoning area from Northern Boulevard, the development site is about a 63,000-square-foot assemblage that is currently occupied by three one- and two-story commercial buildings. The applicant currently uses these buildings for automotive sales and repair uses. Looking at the ground floor of the, ground floor plan of the proposed building, a 36,000-square-foot automotive sales showroom would occupy the Northern Boulevard frontage of the proposed building, with townhouses located along the remaining 44th Street frontage and entrances to a below-grade 156-space accessory parking garage located at the northern edge of the site. The proposed building would rise to a height of 10 stories along Northern Boulevard, though a height of 145 feet, or about 14 stories, would be permitted in the proposed R7X zoning district. The building height would step down contextually to the north, to four stories, to be consistent with the medium-density character of the neighborhood to the north. The applicant also intends to provide a second-story vegetated courtyard for building occupants. The applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to replace a current M1-1 zoning district on the southern portion of Block 704 with a higher-density R7X zoning district along Northern Boulevard, and would extend an existing R6B district that's mapped along 34th Avenue to the south to cover the remaining portion of the site. A C24 commercial overlay would be mapped at a depth of 150 feet from Northern Boulevard, allowing the applicant to include an automotive sales showroom on the ground floor. The applicant states the proposed zoning strategy is a rational approach to land use in the area with higher-density fronting Northern Boulevard with a step down to a lower-scale neighborhood to the north. With the requested actions, the applicant would also be required to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area over the rezoning area. The applicant seeks to allow for both options, both mandatory inclusionary housing options one and two, though the applicant intends to pursue option two. Option two requires that 30% of residential floor area be reserved for permanently affordable housing, for an average of household incomes at 80% of area median income, or about $75,000 for a three-person family in 2018. By comparison, the Queens Community District One median household income is equivalent to about 60% of area median income. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Commissioner Deloos.
I'm wondering, well, first, I appreciate you already including all of my information that I normally request about the MIH and the part about the area median income. I think that helps make things quite transparent during the conversation as it moves through the process. I'm wondering, the area, there's a space, I guess, between the garage entrance and the residential building to the left. I don't know which direction that is. Actually, if you go back to the rendering, I guess that's helpful, too.
Sure, so the side rendering?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get a sense of the back windows for the residential units. What are they looking out onto, especially if any of that is kind of that active space? What kind of consideration it is for those folks? That would be helpful to understand, any drawings moving forward. When that comes back, it'd be helpful.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner Marine.
I'm interested in knowing how the AMI for Family Three plays into HPD's usually term sheets call for an AMI for Family Four. So, I mean, is it relevant? Is it higher? Is it lower? Just an observation.
Adjusted. Commissioner Levin.
I couldn't help but think about the course that the 34th Street, the 34th Avenue rezoning has taken through the Planning Commission, and I think that one is still pending at City Council. Is that right?
City Council, I believe, is progressing that application forward. I can check on the details of that.
Okay, but in that one, the applicant had, which is not that far away, also fronting Northern Boulevard, but in that one, the applicant applied for R7X.
Correct.
And for a 12-story building, and we modified it to an R7D. So why should we be thinking about the same course for this application? And if they're only planning, could they build what they're proposing to build with an R7D designation here, especially since they're only planning to go to 10 stories? Are they using up all the floor area from an R7X?
Sure. So first, they are using all the floor area here. I think what's unique about this site is that it has two corners, so the lot coverage, there's much more flexibility with the lot coverage. And so the applicant does, has shared that this is the most efficient building that they can build. But in regards to, if we compare this to the 34th Avenue rezoning, I think we ultimately want to give the community a chance to respond and reassess then. But I would point out that this site is a bit different from that site, and that the 34th Avenue site was a bit more embedded within the residential context. I think this site is fully on Northern Boulevard. It has a six-story building behind it. So I think we have identified that this is, has some differences that may be rational.
And you're correct. I realized halfway through my question, what I really should have been saying is, we can talk about all this when it comes back from the community, because it's, of course, most important to know what the community has to say about it. But thank you for that extra color. That's helpful.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Could you just go back to the street rendering again?
Sure.
So the frontage there, well, first of all, do we know who the tenant is for the car showroom?
So the applicant is a used car dealer, and so they would occupy the space itself.
That's a fix thing. So along that facade, it shows on the plan, it says offices and then residential entrances. But it's hard to see, because they all look like, very transparent. And then it says three-story, and then a setback, and four-story. But it looks like there's a setback at one story as well, or am I not reading that correctly? There's some kind of, it's a little hard to tell from the drawing. But there are residential entrances along that street once you get past the offices. Is that how it works?
There are. And so in the ground floor plan, I would encourage you to take a look at that. But there are, there's a residential lobby for upper-level units. There are also, you know, the townhouse units would also have their own entrances on 44th Street.
So they wouldn't have the extent of fenestrations that you're seeing on that street rendering, then, would they?
Right. So there may be some discrepancies, and I can ask the applicant to clarify.
Well, we'll probably find out more. I'm just a little confused. Okay.
Other questions? The applicant, oh, Commissioner Deloos.
Speaking of the residential entrances, I guess it would be helpful to know if there are other examples of this kind of setup with residential entrances that's on, well, that's on 44th Street. Okay. But I would ask the applicant, why they didn't just, rather than have separate entrances for each one, why didn't they just include it in a broader building approach?
Sure, thank you.
Other comments? The application is certified.
Item eight, page 270, is a certification of a special permit in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is, again, Blake Montieth. Madam Chairwoman, excuse us a minute.
Yes.
Again, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application to allow large retail establishments in an existing commercial shopping center in Astoria, Community District One, Queens. The owner of a development site at 471048 Street is applying for a special permit to allow large retail establishments, defined in the zoning resolution in Use Groups Six and Ten A, for an existing one-story commercial shopping center located in an M1-1 zoning district. The project area is located on 48th Street, south of Northern Boulevard, northeast of Sunnyside Yard, and between the neighborhoods of Astoria and Sunnyside. The shopping center, shown here in red, is surrounded by other big-box retail uses, as well as automotive sales lots and light industrial buildings. A large house of worship is also located southwest of the shopping center, and the Long Island Railroad and Amtrak tracks are further south. North of the shopping center, along Northern Boulevard, is a two-story light industrial and commercial building, shown here on the left, and a two-story shopping center, shown here on the right. The two-story shopping center extends down 48th Street, across the street from the Plaza Forty-Eight Shopping Center. And 48th Street connects Plaza Forty-Eight to shoppers in Sunnyside to the south. The Plaza Forty-Eight zoning lot includes three buildings. Building one was the subject of two previous special permits by the City Planning Commission. In 1999, the City Planning Commission granted a special permit, allowing large retail establishments in just Building One, but City Council modified the special permit to not allow department stores or variety stores. A new special permit was subsequently granted in 2013 that now allows for department stores and variety stores in Building One, but does not cover Building Two. The applicant now seeks a new special permit to cover both Buildings One and Two. Building Two, shown in this image on the right side, was previously occupied by Toys R Us and Babies R Us. Toys R Us closed its stores nationwide in 2018, including this store. And the vacancy of Building Two is the impetus, or was the impetus, for this special permit, because the applicant has been unable, sorry, unable to find suitable tenants that would be allowed by the zoning resolution of a significant scale to fill this space. The applicant hopes to lease this space to another large retail establishment. As a requirement of the special permit, the applicant would be required to update the parking lot layout to comply with the city's most up-to-date parking layout standards. Their proposed parking lot would include a 457-space lot with bike racks, 41 new trees, new planted medians, and new striping throughout the lot. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Commissioner Deloos.
Is there a tenant in mind? That there, it'd be helpful to know if there's a tenant in mind when it comes back. And all I can say is, as someone with a seven-and-a-half-year-old that's still lamenting the loss of Toys R Us, anything we can do to bring back Toys R Us would be really greatly appreciated.
Great, thank you. I'll ask them to provide that information. And I'm also lamenting the loss of Toys R Us.
Other questions? Commissioner Bernie.
Do you know, do the new parking standards include sort of sustainability provisions like permeable pavement and stormwater management?
My understanding is that it does not include sort of strict standards for permeability, but there are planning requirements, and I can outline more details in a later presentation.
Other questions? Application is certified.
Item nine, page 285, is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District Six, and our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application from Dr. T. Pediatrics, P L L C, requesting a zoning map amendment from an R12A to R32 district to bring two existing medical offices into conformance. The project area is located in Forest Hills, Queens, Community District Six, between Queens Boulevard and the Grand Central Parkway. The project area is situated in an R12A zone, mapped in 2009 as part of the DCP-sponsored Kordmeyer Forest Hills rezoning. This was a contextual rezoning designed to prevent the development of larger, single-family homes in the neighborhood. Just outside of the frame of this image, this commission and the City Council recently approved the former Parkway rezoning, Parker, former Parkway Hospital rezoning, which mapped R7A and R7X on the same block. The project area abuts a R71 district west of the, west of the site, and an R6 district located one block to the south. Both are characterized by six-to-10-story multifamily buildings. The project area consists of four single-family homes. The two in the left half of the image above, fronting the block, consist of medical offices each. A small portion of the applicant's site is outside of the rezoning area, but would still be subject to the rules of the R32 zoning district. This step was chosen to avoid incorporating an additional single-family house that is fronting 72nd Avenue. Images on this slide depict the applicant's site, 11206 71st Road. It was originally developed as a detached residential home in 1930. The ground floor was converted into a medical office space, and a parking lot was developed in 2015. Neither are permitted under current zoning. This image depicts the three other lots included in the project area. The first image depicts some of the 131, 112. The first image depicts 7131 112th Street, which has a C of O for a medical office. These images provide context for the project area, illustrating the transitional nature of this block front. The applicant proposes to change the current zoning from R-12 to R-32 in order to bring these two facilities again into conformance. R-32 is a low-density residential zone. It allows medical offices and multifamily residential, while keeping residential and community facility, FAR, the same. We do not anticipate that any new development would be facilitated as a result of this rezoning. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Questions? Commissioner Levin.
The work was, the work that was done that took this out of sync with the zoning rules, were there DOB permits for that work?
There were not. It is illegally not conforming.
Okay. And it's not a situation where DOB issued permits that they shouldn't have issued?
I do not believe so.
Other questions? Thanks. The application is certified.
Item 10, page 301, is a certification of a special permit in Queens Community District Six. Hala Sala is our presenter.
This is a private application for a self-storage special permit in South Ozone Park in Queens Community District Ten to facilitate the, a mixed-use building for air cargo logistics and a self-storage facility. The proposed project is located south of South Conduit Avenue, between 130th Street and 131st Street, and is currently a parking facility that primarily services users to JFK Airport. The lot contains 115 triple parking stackers totaling to 650 parking spaces. The surrounding area has a mix of uses, including residential, commercial, manufacturing, and community facility uses. South of the site is the Department of Sanitation, Garage, and Office, and further south, across from Nassau Expressway, is the Department of Environmental Protection, Jamaica Bay Waste Water Treatment Plant. To the east of the site is a one-story catering facility and two hotels. To the north of the site, across the Belt Parkway, is Police Officer Edward Brian Park, and west, across 130th Street, is PS-124. Residential uses are predominantly one- and two-family homes to the north and the west. Additionally, JFK Airport is approximately 1,000 feet east of the project site. The proposed project area is currently zoned M-1-2 and has a permitted FAR of 2.0. Surrounding zoning districts include an M-2-1 to the south, M-1-2 to the east, Park to the north, and an R-3-2 to the north and west. In December of 2017, the City Council adopted the self-storage text amendment, which established a required CPC special permit to develop new storage facilities in designated M-1 zoning districts. The development site is located within the JFK SubArea Two Designated District and the JFK Industrial Business Zone. There are no self-storage facilities located within a quarter-mile of the site, and the closest facility is two miles from the proposed location. These photos show the existing conditions of the development site as a public parking facility to JFK Airport. And here with the first photo shows the existing frontage conditions along South Conduit Avenue from 131st Street, and the second photo shows the side lock conditions to the adjacent Department of Sanitation facility. The applicant is proposing a CPC special permit for self-storage use in a designated M district as defined in Appendix J. To grant the special permit, the commission must find that the zoning lot is appropriate for self-storage use, based on land use conditions of the proposed zoning lot and the surrounding area. The following considerations can assist the commission in determining the appropriateness of self-storage use in the development site, including whether the use is consistent with economic development objectives, recent trends for industrial uses are in a minimal demand, size and configuration of the lot, or changes to existing buildings are better suited for self-storage use, the distance to mass transit for employees are better suited for self-storage use, whether the establishment of self-storage can, will cause environmental remediation work on the lot, or whether there's a concentration of existing self-storage facilities in the surrounding area. The commission may also impose appropriate conditions to minimize adverse effects of existing uses. The proposed development is a five-story air cargo and logistics center comprising of 235,610 square feet of warehouse, as-of-right warehouse space, and 186,624 square feet of self-storage facility use. The proposed self-storage facility would be used by both individual and businesses in the surrounding area, and the development would provide 100 parking spaces and 31 loading berths, of which six spaces and three loading berths would be specified for self-storage use. This is a rendering of the proposed building, showing its location on the corner of South Conduit Avenue and 130th Street. PS-134 is directly across the site, across 130th Street. And the trucks will be pulling from South Conduit onto 131st Street to access either the first-floor court for trucks or the ramp to the second floor. The self-storage use would be limited to the third through fifth floors and a portion of the cellar, as shown here, highlighted in red. The ground floor and the second floor will be limited to as-of-right warehouse uses for the air cargo logistics center. The cellar would consist of self-storage space providing 499 units, as well as 94 parking spaces for the logistics facility, and vehicles would enter the cellar parking from 131st Street. The ground floor would provide 1,454 square feet of retail space for the self-storage use, and would be accessed from 130th Street, as well as surface parking and loading berths reserved for self-storage uses. Trucks would access the development site from 131st Street and access either the first-floor truck court, which consists of 15 loading berths, or continue south to access the ramp to the second floor. The second floor is predominantly warehouse space and a truck court with 13 loading berths. A small portion of the second floor is considered self-storage for the elevator access to the remaining floors. Third through fifth floors will be consistently only of self-storage use, and would provide a total of 1,536 units, of which 312 are anticipated for small business use. 269 units will be provided on the third floor, 266 units on the fourth floor, and 274 units on the fifth floor. In summary, this is a proposed development would result in a mixed-use facility of air cargo distribution and self-storage, and is seeking a CPC special permit to facilitate self-storage use within the site.
We were pleased to see this application because those who were on the commission at the time of the adoption of this requirement, there had been predictions that it would never be used, and it's being now requested in under two years. The other thing is, it was interesting to relook at the conditions that we had worked hard to craft and to see that they actually do appear to give us guidance as we evaluate this application. I'll toss it open for questions or comments from the commission. Commissioner Deloos.
I was gonna reflect on the same thing. So, but the other thing, are there other facilities like this where there's basically a ramp for trucks going up to a storage facility? Do we have anything like this in the city? I've never seen it.
No, we don't. This will be the first of its kind.
Okay. Okay. So I guess then the question I would have is, are there any unique considerations? I mean, it seems to, like, helpfully remove the trucks off of the street more easily. But if there's anything that we should know about getting in and out of the facility that's unique as a result of that ramp, it would be helpful. Sure. Thanks.
Commissioner Levin.
Well, yes, just following up on the chair's comments, I guess I hadn't, it caused me to take another look at the phrasing of the analysis that we're meant to go through for this special permit. And it's not really a statement of findings, it's just a number of things that we may consider. So when it comes back, and when it comes time for us to be considering this, I think we're gonna have to look to department staff to advise us about things like the, the city's economic development objectives for the designated area, that that's the first consideration. But working through all these considerations, I think we're gonna need some input from staff about how those considerations apply at this location.
So I would like to just mention that there is one finding, and it is that the site is appropriate based off of its land uses and the surrounding areas. We will go through each consideration, if you please, but some of them won't always add up to every situation, since they will be unique.
And then just a follow-up question. As I recall, when the self-storage zoning text was going through, there was changes made with respect to the JFK area, that added an area and then took it away. Is this an area that would have escaped a special permit under one version that was being considered at a particular time?
Yes, this might have been one of them.
Okay.
Commissioner Bernie.
Was there a traffic study associated with this? Because 1,500 self-storage spaces, it sounds like an awful lot of vehicle, you know, access to this facility. So I assume there's a traffic study?
There would have been some sort of traffic study with the environmental assessment statement that was made, and I can speak further to it later on.
Okay. Be interesting to know. And I'm just curious about the building. It's a kind of an unusual beast. Do you know anything about the materials? I mean, the, the white facade on Conduit, what is that made of? And those green panels, what do they, what does that designate? Is there any more information?
We can get more information on what kind of materials they're looking at, but right now, this is primarily just illustrative at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Edie.
All right. Thanks again. The storage facilities that are targeted for small businesses, are those somewhat segregated or designated as such, or is that aspirational?
They will be larger units, approximately 150 square feet versus the ones that are supposed to be more for residential uses, will be about 100 square feet, although they're not going to be completely taken out and only reserved for small businesses, they're just anticipated.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
So the air cargo portion of the building, is that operated by the Port Authority or?
It'll be private.
Private?
Mm-hmm.
I see.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ramperchak.
Yeah. Would they be providing a floor plan of how they're gonna lay out the storage units? Because right now, and those are open plan, right?
Right now, it's an open plan, but we can request that information.
Thank you.
Hala, could you go back to the full-size rendering?
Sure.
If you could explain, there's this ball field, and it looks like basketball courts across the street, and how that relates to the facility and the residential neighborhood.
Sure. So this open play area is part of the school that is across the street, and then it's the barrier between what will later become more residential uses. Off the screen, you have more one-to-two-family residential homes, as well as across from the Belt Parkway.
And I think you had also mentioned that the trucks, though, are on the far street so that there won't be truck traffic interfering with kids coming from the right-hand side to the field.
Right. So the trucks will be coming up South Conduit, turning down here, and they will be entering the facility that way. And then when they exit, they'll continue southbound on 131st Street, getting onto 150th, and eventually onto the Van Wyck Expressway. So no trucks should be coming down 130th Street by the school.
But that's for the air cargo, though. Presumably, the 1,500 self-storage units are individual people.
That's correct. That's only for the trucks. The entrance for the self-storage is along 130th Street, which will be right in here. And there only, there's only six parking spaces.
So as long as the 1,500 people don't all come at the same time, I suppose it'll be okay.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Then the application is certified.
Item 11, page 325, is a pre-hearing review of a UDAP designation disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan Community District Four. Annie White is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Ryan said, this is an application backed for pre-hearing for a UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of a city-owned property located at 201207 7th Avenue in Manhattan Community District Four. There's the existing property. The applicant for this project is the Department of Housing Preservation Development, HPD. The project site, 201207 7th Avenue, is located in the Chelsea neighborhood of Manhattan. HPD is seeking the UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition to develop a nine-story mixed-use commercial and residential property. The project site, which is indicated here in the, oops, red line, is located on the corner of West 22nd Street and 7th Avenue. It is within an R-8A residential district with a C-25 commercial overlay. So for a brief background on the property, in 1976, the city assumed ownership of the four contiguous buildings through a tax lien foreclosure. Then in 1997, the 14 dwelling units were entered into the HPD Tenant Interim Lease or TIL program. Starting in 2008, nine of the 14 tenants began to be relocated from the property due to structural issues with the buildings. At the time of this application, tenants in four of the five remaining units were relocated, and HPD is actively working to relocate the remaining tenant. Post-construction of the proposed property, all relocated tenants would have the opportunity to return to the units. Here's a illustrative rendering showing that proposed development, which would be an approximately 22,000-square-foot, nine-story mixed-use commercial and residential building. There would be 26 affordable home ownership units, which would be a mix of studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. There would be an approximately 4,000-square-foot ground-floor commercial space and a 1,000-square-foot rooftop space for those residential tenants. Sorry, apologize. HPD is seeking the UDAP project designation, approval, and disposition of a city-owned property to facilitate this proposed development pursuant to Article 16 of the General Municipal Law. The development site consists of underutilized property, which impairs the quality of the surrounding community. According to the applicant, the proposed development would protect and promote the health and safety, and would promote sound growth and development in the project area. The proposed development is therefore eligible to be an urban development action area project, During the public review, its full board meeting on April 3rd of this year, Manhattan Community Board Four adopted a resolution recommending denial with conditions of the application, with zero in favor, 32 opposed, and zero present but not eligible. The conditions included many relating to the affordability requirements, so a request to extend the affordability to an eight-year minimum and include additional income bands, one at 130 AMI, along with the existing 160 AMI. Ideas to limit the seller windfall by not allowing direct-to-purchaser sale of units and establishing a resale price cap. Also, not allowing commercial spaces to be tenanted to large commercial chain stores and having those at below-market rents as well. And then there were additional building design requirements, such as changing the brick shade on the facade, and also relocating some of the units, including relocating larger bedroom units to higher floors. On May 10th, we received a letter from the Manhattan Borough President recommending disapproval with conditions of the application. Those conditions largely mirrored the community board's letter, also including implementing a mechanism to ensure permanent affordability, extending those affordability requirements to the longest period possible, and, again, not allowing that direct-to-purchaser sale of units. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Marine.
Those, thank you for the presentation. Those tenants that were part of the TIL program, I'm sure they expected to go into some sort of affordable HDFC at some point, where units would be sold at minimal cost of $2,500. What's intended for those tenants having the option to come back?
I'm not as familiar with the program you mentioned, but I, they will have the option to move back. The five that were recently relocated have been involved in the design process, and the units will be sold to them at a, offered to be sold at $2,500 per apartment. It's determined if the, the income of the existing tenants cannot meet that, or if they're below the certain area median income, they'll be eligible for the certain area median income, they'll be eligible for a rent-to-own payment plan. And, you know, existing subsidies were necessary.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Could you go over the income bands again? What do they carry?
Sure. So the units that have been set aside for the relocated tenants, those will be sold back to them at that number that I just explained, at meeting their income level. The rest will be, the vacant units that will be seeking the co-op purchasers, will be at a maximum of 165 AMI.
I'm sorry, what is that? I should ask Michelle, since she just rolls off a... What's the median income there?
This has been updated since then. 165 is a lot higher than I normally consider. So, this has been updated since then, but 165, well, this actually goes, it's over $150,000 a year family income.
Commissioner Levin.
It seems that the community board and Borough President comments really go to the HPD side of this project. Will someone from HPD be able to come on Wednesday to discuss with us the regulatory attributes of the project? Yes, absolutely. They'll be here at the public hearing.
Commissioner Bernie.
I mean, I don't quite understand the process here. So you've got these conditions imposed by both the community board, that totally opposed it, and then the Borough President. So, and then now you're here. So what's the mechanism for reconciling those two things?
I'm happy to try to, but Maurice said you... Sure, so this is being, they, you know, it's coming back for its pre-hearing, so on Wednesday, we'll, you know, have the opportunity to have HPD perhaps respond to a lot of the concerns from the community board and Borough President regarding the affordability requirements and the like, that they'll be much more kind of able to do so than I am. And then it will be to the commission for a vote, and these aspects of the project will be considered by you all in, you know, in discussion with HPD, how that project is shaped.
I'll note that both the community board and the Borough President's recommendations are advisory, but we take them quite seriously, and they very much frame and inform our consideration. But it is our vote that then goes to the city council. The city council itself can also make changes, provided that they're within the scope of the application.
No, I'm just, you know, it's just unfortunate that you get to that situation now where, well, the city doesn't pay any attention to the community board, and the community board people are all crazy, and the sort of, we always have these sort of irreconcilable situations. And I just wonder if there wasn't a better mechanism for negotiating these before it comes, because if it comes to us in that state, you know, we're powerless to do anything.
I would argue we're not powerless, that we actually, very frequently, we can see projects be shaped, be enhanced because of the input from the, from the community.
No, absolutely.
And I would just also add that the, you know, this is not the first time the community board and Borough President has seen this project when it came to them in the public review. HPD's been working very closely with Manhattan Community Board 4 in trying to shape this project, and it's changed drastically since they first came to them many years ago. So it, although we're getting the recommendations now, it has been a back-and-forth process between the city and the community board.
Commissioner Levin.
And having written a bunch of these no-unless recommendations for this community board, although it's been a long time since I've been on the inside of their work, so I really don't presume to speak for them, but this is an example of how a community board effectively uses the political power it has in the Eulert process. If you read under, you know, read through all their applications, they're really actually quite complimentary about the design work that was done. They're frustrated with the process with HPD, but they remain committed to figuring out how to make this work. And this is really a message to us saying, no, we really mean this. And it is also a political message to the city council, saying, fix this before you let it go. So it, it's kind of a no that has to be understood in its context.
I'll also note that we very much welcome a vote. We obviously prefer yes, but with the conditions, what frequently frustrates us is when we get a no with absolutely no explanation, and that makes it so much harder, particularly if people don't then show up at the public hearing to give us more context. This is a very savvy community board, as is evident in reading through their lengthy letter to us.
Commissioner Deloos.
I was just going to add the comment you did, which is, you know, different community boards kind of approach the process differently, and I think this community board in particular has a long history of voting in this way and providing really detailed information for us about, I think that helps inform how we then consider things moving forward. And it would be great, you know, and other community boards would do that as well, but it'd be great if all community boards kind of took that extra step to kind of explain things the way that this community board does.
Other comments? Then we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Item 12, page 362, is a pre-hearing review of a special permit and authorization in Manhattan Community District 5. Ezra Moser is here to present.
All right. So this is a presentation on One Penn Plaza, which is returning from referral to the community board and Borough President for pre-hearing. So the two main components of this application are a special permit to reduce and eliminate bonus plaza areas for which a bonus was granted and utilized, and then a authorization to close overnight two of the plaza areas on the zoning lot. There are also applications for chairperson certifications for design changes to the plaza areas, and to place two food and beverage kiosks in two additional plaza areas. It was certified and referred on March 11. The CPC period ends July 15. Manhattan Community Board 5 voted to disapprove with conditions, and it played out along some of the similar dynamics that Commissioner Levin just illustrated, and I'll get more into that in a bit. And then the Manhattan Borough President voted to approve it with conditions. So just briefly to reorient ourselves, One Penn Plaza is a 1.8 million-square-foot office complex that occupies a full block that's bounded by 8th Avenue to the west, 7th Avenue on the east, West 34th Street to the north, and West 33rd Street to the south. It's directly north of the MSG complex, as well as Penn Station. And it's primarily comprised of a large office tower that sits mid-block, that's 57 stories, and then two smaller retail pavilions along 8th Avenues and 7th Avenues, which are separated from the main office tower by a series of plaza areas. Here is a more colorful illustrative existing condition site plan. You can see that the public spaces are divided into several plaza areas. We have a large elevated north plaza along West 34th Street, a similarly elevated south plaza, which runs along 33rd Street, a small elevated southwest plaza, which is separated from its adjacent plaza areas by an accessory loading bays driveway, and then the driveway to a below-grade parking garage. We have a large through-lot west plaza, which is significantly elevated above grade, roughly five feet to three feet, depending on which street you're on. And then it also contains two circulation spaces along 8th Avenue that are at grade. Then there is also this through-lot plaza here, which we are calling the East Plaza. And there are two very small circulation plazas along 7th Avenue, but there are no actions proposed for these spaces. I'd also note that, as you can see outlined in blue here, there is an existing connection to Penn Station, which is located off of the West Plaza. It is currently unmarked and primarily used by building tenants, you know, because it's not well-advertised. So the special permit's looking to reduce the full 1,900 square feet of this northerly arcade right here, which I did actually forget to mention. This northern arcade and southern arcade provide access to the building lobby off of 34th Street and 33rd Street. So, again, the special permit's looking to reduce the full 1,900 square feet of this northern arcade, an additional 3,200 square feet of the north plaza, 91 square feet of the southern arcade, 157 square feet cumulatively on the west plaza, and then 21 square feet on the southwest plaza. Then the proposed authorization to limit overnight use of the space is proposed for the west plaza and the east plaza, both of which run through lot. So this shows the proposed conditions in site plan form. Very broadly, the applicant proposes to improve the plaza area's pedestrian access, circulation, and visual transparency by removing obstructions at their street lines, particularly on the north plaza and south plaza. They propose to activate the spaces by providing a variety of new seating types and user amenities. They are providing a new mass transit entrance to Penn Station off of the north plaza, and they are improving all the plaza area's paving materials, the color palette, lighting, and signage to comply with the plaza regulations of Section 3770. They're also introducing two new food and beverage service in the form of two kiosks, one here in the west plaza and one here in the east plaza. And these various actions kind of complicate how these design changes are being effectuated. So this is kind of a key to show you which actions are implementing which design changes. For the north plaza, the west plaza, and the southwest plaza, these are all having portions of their area reduced by the special permit. Special permit contains provisions that effectuate design changes, so those three right here are having their changes implemented by special permit. Then the south plaza and the east plaza are having their design changes implemented by the more traditional route, which is a design change certification pursuant to Section 37625. And then, as I mentioned, the nighttime closure authorizations are for the two plazas that run through lot, and that's the west plaza and the east plaza. And I'd note that on the west plaza, the closure is just for these areas with stair access. The 8th Avenue portions would not be closed as part of the authorization request. So in terms of public review, as I noted, the community board voted to disapprove with conditions. They requested that the applicant provide an ADA-accessible elevator for the new Penn Station entrance, provide a public restroom in one of the plaza areas, that they adjust the closure hours for the west plaza from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. year-round. Currently, they change based on the seasons and are compliant with the provisions of the nighttime closure authorization text. It's between 8:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. in the late fall and winter months, and then in spring and summer, it would be 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. The community board also requested that the applicant adjust their hours of operation for the new Penn Station entrance, which is currently 7 to 7. The Borough President voted to approve the conditions, requesting that the applicant provide as well an ADA-accessible elevator to the new Penn Station entrance, and adjust its operation hours, the 7 to 7 hours. That they provide improved signage for the new entrance, that they provide affordable space for performing arts-related groups somewhere on-site at One Penn Plaza, and that they provide a new public restroom inside the Long Island Railroad concourse. Just to briefly reiterate the commission's questions from referral. So one was about whether it was feasible to provide ADA accessibility for the new Penn Station entrance off of 34th Street, as well as the south side of the west plaza, where it meets West 33rd Street. There is ADA access ramp on the north side of that plaza at 34th Street, so the question was whether it'd be feasible to provide one at 33rd Street so that someone needing to use that access point could travel through lot. The second question was whether it would be appropriate to put a trial period or term limit on the overnight closure authorization. The third was what the hard cost of the new Penn Station entrance would be. The fourth is what outreach with the local homelessness service organizations had taken place. So effectively, was this closure the last option, or were there other avenues that had not been explored yet? There is a question as to whether there were similar safety and security issues at Plaza 33 and within the surrounding area, and I'd just reiterate that the reasons for the closure being requested were safety concerns that impeded in, you know, safe use of the plaza by users, as well as the maintenance of it. There's a question about wayfinding signage, particularly indicating where ADA access points were, and, you know, the through-lot accessibility. Then there was a question about what sustainability measures the new proposal would include, as well as sustainable construction measures. And so I'm briefly going to speak to the first two of these questions, and then the applicant's prepared to speak to all of them at the hearing. But, so with the first one, ADA accessibility, the applicant has studied the provision of an ADA elevator inside the new Penn Station entrance, and one that would connect to the concourse level of Penn Station, and they believe this to be generally feasible. The applicant has also studied the provision of an ADA ramp between the west plaza southern edge and 33rd Street, and they believe that it would not be feasible without incurring significant costs. They have provided a memo detailing some of the challenges that they, that this would face, which were included as an addendum to your packet. Happy to walk through that as well. The second major question was about a term limit for the authorization. So I'd briefly note the department has determined that a term limit for the closure would be within scope of the authorization, and that the applicant is happy to answer questions about that term limit at the hearing. So, any questions?
I'd just begin by noting that the applicant's willingness to entertain new ADA accessibility to another entrance to Penn Station would be very significant, and, in my mind, more than outweigh not being able to provide the ADA accessibility on both sides of the plaza. I'd also note that, having asked the question about the trial period, it was based on the sense that the neighborhood was changing so rapidly with Hudson Yards, with the upgrades to Moynihan, and with the tremendous work that the applicant is doing to its own buildings there, that one can look forward positively to a time when the current unsafe conditions might no longer prevail because of the new activity.
Commissioner Bernie.
I must say, you didn't show them here, but I thought the proposed designs are vast improvement on what's there now. It wasn't one of the better pops when it was originally built, so it's really good that the applicant's going back. I'm just a little bit concerned about losing that bonusable space, and I wondered, do we know how much additional floor area the developer received as a result of that bonus?
The entire bonus? It's about, I want to say, 250,000 square feet. I can go through the zoning analysis and check, but...
So that's, you know, 250,000 square feet at, I don't know what's, $50 a square foot is a conservative number, I suppose. That's an enormous amount of money. And to be then giving back some of the public benefit that was given seems to me troublesome.
So the applicant is reducing a commensurate amount of floor area from within their building that was generated by the bonus, because one of the conditions of it is that, you know, the reduction in the plaza area cannot create a new non-compliance or exacerbate an existing one.
Other questions? Then we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Did we get a copy of the Borough President's recommendation? You referred to it, but it was not...
I placed it in the folder. I apologize if it didn't make it...
Was it under CPC memos? I didn't, it wasn't with the packet. Could you try again, please?
Sure, absolutely.
We'll make sure that you all have it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Item 13, page 446, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District 11. Sayed Ahmed is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is returning for pre-hearing review. The actions requested were a zoning map amendment from R-5B C-23 to R-6A C-23 district, and a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area. The project area is located on the north side of Avenue U between Lake Street and McDonald Avenue in the Gravesend neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 11. The proposed actions will facilitate a mixed-use development with nine apartments and ground-floor commercial space on applicant site Lot 42, shown here, outlined in red. In addition, the proposed rezoning will also bring two existing overbuilt structures in existing R-5B district on Lots 42. in existing R5B district on Lots 40 and 138 into compliance. The surrounding area is predominantly developed with medium to low-density residential buildings and community facility uses. The East-West Avenue U is the main commercial thoroughfare in the neighborhood and is developed with residential buildings with ground floor commercial uses. McDonald Avenue is the north-south artery with elevated F-line and is developed with low-rise residential buildings and single-story commercial and automotive uses. The project area is well-served by mass transit. Avenue U Station on F-line is next to the project area, and B3 Bus provides service along Avenue U corridor. The project area outlined here in black dotted line comprises of three full lots and three partial tax lots, including the applicant's site outlined in red, which is located at the corner of Avenue U and Lake Street. The applicant's site is an irregular-shaped lot comprising one-third of the rezoning area and is occupied by a one-story commercial building with five commercial and retail tenants. The proposed rezoning to R6A C23 district will facilitate the development of a four-story building with nine apartments and approximately 5,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space. The proposed building will be four-story or 47 feet high and will have 11,900 square feet of residential floor area. In order to facilitate the proposed project and create a rational zoning area, the applicant is proposing to extend an existing R6A zoning district from the east to the block front on the north side of Avenue U that would cover the development site as well as five other lots. The applicant also proposes to map the entire project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area option two. The MIH area requirements apply to projects with at least 10 dwelling units or 12,500 square feet of residential floor area. Since the proposed development would be below the specified thresholds of the MIH requirement, it would not provide any affordable housing units. Community Board held a public hearing on April 11 and voted to approve the application with conditions by a vote of 25 in favor, none against, and no abstentions. The two provisions the community board put forward are that the project area has a height cap at four stories, so it will conform with the existing structures in the project area too, and new commercial uses would not rise beyond the first floor. In addition, the community board expressed their desire that the Department of City Planning conduct a study to assess the needs for additional core services, considering an increase in as-of-right residential development in their district. Borough President's Office held a public hearing on May 1 and submitted a recommendation on Friday night. We have added a hard copy of the recommendation in your packages. Borough President's Office approved the application with the following condition. One, the applicant provides a binding commitment that the building height won't exceed four stories. Two, restrict the remaining commercial space for leasing at below-market terms. Three, commit to implement a curb extension plan in coordination with DOT and DEP. Four, explore additional resiliency and sustainability measures such as roof treatment, enhanced tree pits, rain gardens, and solar panels. Five, retain Brooklyn-based contractors and subcontractors. This concludes the presentation. The applicant and the owner will be here on Wednesday to answer the questions.
Questions? Commissioner Marine.
I'm a little bit confused with a statement in the findings here that say the applicant intends to pursue option two, however, this project falls below the threshold, and as a result, no affordable units will be provided.
Yes, because...
I see, even though he's not, I got it. Understood.
Okay.
Is this the time to comment on the building design? Or should we wait for the applicant?
This is for illustrative purposes, but the applicant, who's also the architect of the building, will be here on Wednesday.
Okay, all right, so maybe we'll discuss it then.
It's actually appropriate to do it now. Frequently applicants will send representatives to our review sessions so that they are better prepared for the public hearing.
Well, why don't you put the rendering up, then? Just take a look, so... Yeah, I mean, I quite know where to begin, really, but, I mean, it looks as though with that very heavy cornice, it's an attempt to have a building with a base, a middle, and a top, which is a reasonable approach. But that's kind of belied by this big curtain wall vertical element on the corner. That would be one comment. And then, I'm just wondering about the air conditioner sleeves, that we seem to have some rooms that have sleeves below the windows, although they're not incorporated in the frames, and other windows that I assume would end up being window-mounted units. So that seems a little inconsistent. So, and then the very heavy cornice and the very heavy cornice line at the retail base maybe just needs a little bit more refinement, I would suggest.
The architect will be here, and, you know, I think he will be able to answer these questions better. But I have seen three different versions of it. This was the better one.
It's a work in progress.
Yes.
Other comments? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I think Commissioner Deloos had a comment when this was referred out that I certainly shared, and that's a concern about the notion of rezoning this site merely to have it developed to right up under the threshold for mandatory inclusionary housing. So what are we getting out of this rezoning? I understand that, I think part of the answer must be in the comments we got from the community board and the Borough President about concerns about the height of the building, but I think we also have to be concerned about the integrity of MIH.
The applicant will be here, but the site is irregular. It is, at the most, 63 feet deep. At the other end, it is 35 feet. And you go above 10 stories, then the parking becomes an issue. So...
Above 10, not 10 stories, above...
Oh, I mean, sorry, above 10 units.
Above 10 units?
Yes.
Parking requirements?
Then they would have to provide parking. But applicant will be here to answer, you know, this question.
We can also look at the environmental review and see what other sites were projected, and those sites may actually trigger MIH. So there, you know, there may be some give and take on other sites.
I just want to point out that if this were MIH option one, even parking requirements are waived for 80% of AMI and below, so I don't know if your parking calculation is correct if you included the MIH units.
Okay, which begs a follow-up question, which I meant to ask, is how did the, notwithstanding the fact that they're not going to build affordable housing, at least they say they're not going to, how did they decide that option two was the correct one to map here? Why not map both?
They will be here to answer the questions.
The most politic answer.
Yes, they picked the options.
Any other questions? Will be an interesting public hearing on Wednesday.
Item 14 is a city council modification scope determination on the residential mechanical voids text amendment. Kyoshi Yamazaki is here to present.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. We're back on residential tower mechanical voids text amendment. I'm here today to go through the city council modifications to the CPC-approved tax amendment. As you can see on the next slide, the city council proposes two modifications. The first modification is to lower the basic mechanical floor height threshold of 30 feet to 25 feet before the space is counted tower zoning floor area. The proposed modification is consistent with DCP's initial proposal. The second item here is on a vesting provision. The city council proposes to add a grandfathering provision to waive the mechanical voids restrictions for the portion of a building located below the height of 130 feet for certain developments if a development is on a corner lot with a lot area of less than 5,000 square feet and located in C52 district, in Community District 5 of Manhattan. Also, if an application has been filed with the Department of Building before July 8 of 2017, and the overall height of mechanical floors located below the height of 130 feet does not exceed 80 feet. The proposal is, DCP believes that the modification is within scope of the proposed text amendment.
Kyoshi, could you explain which building is being referred to?
Yes, so the proposed site is located directly south from the Empire State Building, so north of Madison area along Fifth Avenue. And the site is on a very small corner lot, less than 5,000 square feet, surrounded by old like tenement buildings with no open space in the back of the building. And because of the small site, the tower footprint is extremely small, and it seems that they need additional floors to accommodate necessary mechanical equipments.
I'll note that while this site is not in the central business district, it has a lot of characteristics of it. And as you know, the department is looking at what kind of restrictions or limitations on voids, on excessive mechanical voids should apply to residential buildings in the central business districts. And I do think that this particular building is an example of some of the challenges that one faces in central business districts that are general rule, we don't believe can just be cut and pasted for central business districts because of their different character. But we'll be coming, obviously, back to the commission with a formal proposal later this year.
Other questions? Commissioner Ramperchat.
So it says, an application has been filed, so it does not have to be approved. Once it's just been filed, the DOB is in the process of...
Yes, that is correct. This particular development, it does not have a full construction permit approved yet. My understanding of the current situation of the building, the development site is basically the building existing on the site has been demolished. However, there is no construction activity since they do not have the permits yet.
And the last question, what was the idea behind July 8?
So this is really like restricting the applicability of this waiver provision.
So was there something that was happening at that time, that they decided July 8 was going to be the date?
If a landlord is actively seeking for building department approval for residential tower, then a certain portion of the tower will be not subject to our proposal.
I would guess that the date is the day after the owner of this lot filed documents with buildings. It's a bespoke grandfathering provision.
Commissioner Duak.
It's not so much a question as a comment. I'm a little bit disappointed in the reduction from 30 feet to 25 feet. It was based on expert testimony, but again, if it's in scope, I don't see that we have any prerogative on our purview. So if it's in scope, and then the recommendation from the department is that it is in scope, then I guess that's my comment. Disappointed, disappointed.
Thanks shared by many in the department.
Commissioner Levin.
I note from our press clippings that this had a particularly raucous passage through the city council process, so congratulations on coming out the other end. But those same press clippings indicated some commitments that the Department of City Planning made to study some additional items, you know, beyond the scope of this application. So I understand why you're not presenting them here, but can you give us the highlights film of what other commitments got made in the course of the city council discussions?
Absolutely. I'm very happy to answer the question. So the Department of City Planning is committed to analyze buildings in central business districts, as Chad Lago already told.
Oh, no, just residential buildings.
Yes, absolutely, residential or residential portion of a building, yes. So that proposal will be presented to the commission for certification by the end of summer, which generally means in September.
We're looking at September for that one?
Yes. And another component is that we will look into unenclosed mechanicals, well, unenclosed open voids that was highlighted as part of during the process. And we are committed to look into issues, identify existing issues, and, you know, if such, you know, okay, so one step back, like, you know, we have concluded that it will be extremely difficult and dangerous to, you know, introduce any restriction to open, you know, voids as part of the current proposal, since there is a material difference between enclosed space and open space. And we know that there are a lot of desirable open void or, you know, open area below a building that is enjoyed by the typical New Yorkers. So by the end of next summer, City Planning will present our findings on such unenclosed space study.
Next summer meaning 2020?
2020, yes. Yes, not the summer of this year, but one summer from next...
I'll note that this is a much more complex issue because of the multitude of ways in which open space can express itself in a building.
No doubt.
Yes, yes. Even defining enclosure or open void is already a challenge. So we really would like to make sure that we don't pre-cruel to something we love. And the third component of our commitment is basically to look into minimum zoning lot sizes in commercial district. So today, in residential district, there is a minimum lot requirement, so, which is at least 18 feet in width and at least 1,700 square feet in the lot area. So anything below that dimension couldn't be subdivided because that substandard, lots are difficult for residential, any residential building to be built. However, in commercial districts, where residential districts are permitted, there's no restrictions on, you know, minimum lot dimensions. So the project in Upper East Side highlighted this issue by having small 10-foot by 20-foot 200 square feet in total zoning lot to go around some of zoning requirements. So the Department of City Planning will look into those issues, and we will issue our, present our findings by the end of this summer.
I'll note that this is consistent with the work that we did on the voids, which is that we are very keen on not limiting architectural expression, but when we do see a explicit use of the rules in ways that were never intended, like the super-tall mechanical voids, like the 200-square-foot lot, we are sending a message that we will take a hard look at it, and in the case of the mechanical voids, take action on it. So could I have an assent by show of hands to send a letter to the city council, letting them know that their modifications are within scope? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 15 is a city council modification scope determination on the Mana Products text amendment. Alexis Wheeler is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We don't have any actual materials to be reviewing today for this, but we did receive a modification from city council to the language that was being proposed in the zoning text amendment for Mana Products. We do determine these to be within scope. They are just very minor adjustments to the language to, again, allow for it to read in a relatively simple manner. But there's nothing substantive to the actual intention of this amendment.
Any comments, questions? Then I'll again ask for an assent by show of hands to send the scope letter to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
For future votes, on May 22nd, public meeting staff prepared report on the 76th Drive and Austin Street rezoning. And also scheduled for decision on May 22nd are 63 Lindenwood Road and 35 Pleasant Street in Staten Island, 631 Ocean Terrace, also in Staten Island, and 273 Lighthouse Avenue in Staten Island. For post-hearing, Stephen Johnson is here to present some work on the Manhattan Core parking that should illuminate the 515 West 18th Street proposal.
I'll note before Stephen begins that we are in continuing discussions with the applicant, but we thought it made sense to step back and take a look at how the Manhattan Core parking regulations have been working in practice over time to provide some context for this particular special permit that's before us.
All right, so good afternoon, Commissioners. This project for a parking special permit was certified on January 28th, 2019, and a public hearing was held on April 24th. During the public review process, a number of issues and questions were raised that I would like to address today that are related to the project and within the context of the Manhattan Core parking regulations. I will start with a quick overview of the regulations with some background information. The original 1982 regulations had the goals to reduce the supply of off-street parking in the Manhattan Core, which is Community Districts 1 through 8, reduce the automobile use, and specifically, car commuting into the Core and the Central Business District, and to improve air quality. And this was accomplished by introducing parking maximums that is not requiring parking in new developments and limiting the amount of as-of-right parking. Now, for the 2013 text amendments, we wanted to take a fresh look at the regulations and get a better understanding on how they were working, their effects on the supply of parking, and we wanted to update the 30-year-old regulations, add some text on new parking special permits and findings, and the ability to have public parking in accessory garages. So the department completed a study in about 2011, and this led to the text amendment. And these were the key findings from the text amendment listed here. First, we found that there was a shift from commuters driving into the Central Business District, which is Districts 1 through 6, and using public parking in the 80s, to Manhattan residents using those public parking spaces. And this is coupled with a shift from commuters using private vehicles coming into the CBD to using mass transit. Second, we found that Manhattan residents don't necessarily park in their own buildings, typically because there isn't any parking in their own buildings, but they park in the building next door, or they park in one neighborhood over, or the next neighborhood over, whatever is suitable for their needs for location and price. Third, these two findings are directly, first two findings were directly linked to the 2013 text amendment, which permitted DCA-licensed facilities, including accessory residential parking facilities, to operate as public parking. Fourth, car ownership rates in the Core are low, with 23% of Manhattan Core households having a car versus 46% citywide. Car ownership rates increase with household income, and for households earning over $130,000 annually, the car ownership rate increases to 34%. Fifth, the parking regulations are compatible with the population and job growth in a thriving Central Business District. As our stats show up there, the Manhattan population increased 15%. The employment levels increased 22%, while the off-street parking spaces reduced over time by 25%. Now, within this context, some limited amounts of new parking is still needed, but it is unlikely to be a net increase in parking spaces because public parking facilities serve a large number of users, Manhattan residents, and they fill neighborhood needs for unmet parking, and they also serve for tourists and business and commercial activity. So some of the data that I'm showing you here is updated from the original data and research that we did from the Manhattan Core text amendment. So overall, we see a continued decline in the supply of DCA-licensed parking spaces and a decline in vehicles entering into the Central Business District. The blue line on the left represents, I don't know if you can see it as a blue line, but it's a blue line on the left represents the original 1982 Manhattan Core parking text, and then the text amendment in 2013 is the blue line on the right. Now, the orange line across the top is the number of vehicles that are entering into the CBD from 1978 to 2016. You can see that there's a steady increase of vehicles entering from the first year in 78 up to 1999, peaking with 844,000 vehicles, and then continuing to trend downward to this day. Just from 2000 to 2016, there has been a 29% drop in automobile entries into the CBD. Now, the gray line at the bottom, it's a little bit hard to see, but that's on the chart, represents the number of DCA-licensed parking spaces in the Core, I'm sorry, in the CBD. It starts at 127,000 spaces, and it goes down to approximately 94,000 spaces. Now, I have a blow-up of this chart so you can see the actual number. It's a little bit more clear, as you can see. The number of DCA-licensed parking spaces has decreased by 26%. As, just as a reminder, all attended parking facilities are required to have a DCA license and post rates, whether they are public parking or accessory. So all attended facilities have a DCA license with posted rates. So what we're seeing here in this graph, graphic, is a slow squeeze on the amount of DCA-licensed parking spaces in the Central Business District. And we think this is a trend that will continue. This area chart shows slightly different information, more recent timeframe from 2006 to 2018, but shows the continued trend of fewer DCA-licensed parking spaces. The color bands show the levels of DCA's parking spaces broken down by community district, and that's the Manhattan Core Community Districts 1 through 8. The previous chart just showed CBDs 1 through 6. So CD1 is at the bottom of it, and CD8 is at the top in the brown. So the DCA supply continues to fall. It's fallen from, fell from 153,000 in 2006 to 131,000 in 2018, which is a 15% decline. Again, this is going on at the same time the population is increasing and employment levels are increasing. So to focus on the net change in dwelling units versus the net change in parking spaces, this is one of the key findings in the 1345 special permit. We looked at a 10-year period from 2007 to 2017 and compared across Manhattan Core Community Districts. So the chart shows the percentage change of parking spaces and dwelling units, as well as the absolute number. And the absolute number is the number that's located on the top, the blue bars, or the orange bars, or at the bottom of the bars. So you can see that in Community District 1, they had the largest percentage growth in dwelling units in the last 10 years at around 40%, but CD4, which is located right here, clearly has the most absolute number of dwelling units at 19,600. And that's simultaneously while it's losing over 3,300 DCA-licensed parking spaces. So in addition to that, you can see that Community Districts 2, 4, 5, 6, and 8 have all notable reductions in parking spaces, while 3 and 7 remain relatively flat. And you can see that CD1 has the notable bump here with 1,300 spaces, and that's mainly attributed to the Battery Garage, which is a 2,100-space garage that was mainly used by the MTA until 2012, when it became a public parking garage, and that added 1,100 spaces to their, to that community district. Now, we're going from a breakdown by community district to comparison between Manhattan Core and Community District 4. And Community District 4 is the location of the parking special permit. So CD4 is on the left of the chart, and it's beating the overall trends by having a larger 28% increase in dwelling units and a larger decrease in parking spaces at about 15% than the entire Manhattan Core. In absolute numbers, the CD4 has lost 3,300 parking spaces. Now, this is mainly attributed to the dwelling units and redevelopment in the area can be attributed to the restoration of the High Line and the Transfer Corridor and the Wells Chelsea rezoning that we did back in 2005. So we've seen a lot of growth and development in the area in the most recent 10 years. So now turning to some data specifically on the 1345 parking special permits. In roughly the 12 years previous to the 2013 Manhattan Core text amendment, there were 72 special permit applications in the Core that were approved by the Commission. In the six years since 2013, there have been 22 parking special approvals that have been approved, which is approximately a 40% decrease over the previous number. Of the 22 approved applications, 21 of the approvals have been for predominantly residential developments, and five of those have been to increased capacity at existing parking facilities. You may remember that there were three for Rupert Brewery and two special permits for Kipps Bay Towers. Of the 22 approved special permits, 16 are for new residential developments. And within those 16 projects collectively, they've created about 4,000 dwelling units, 1,858 total parking spaces, and of that total parking spaces, 732 were as-of-right for a ratio of parking spaces to dwelling units at 46%. The project sites for those 16 developments were on top of 1,700 public parking spaces. So you can see that though there's a number of spaces that are increased, the ratio between the total parking spaces increased and the number that were lost are pretty similar in this case. Turning to 515 West 18th Street. This is the applicant's study area. They're in red at the center of the map. The development site is approximately, the residential study area is approximately a third of a mile around the study area, around the development site. As-of-right, the development has permitted 36 residential accessory parking spaces and five spaces related to the commercial space. In the look-back period from 2007 to the build year, 2020, there has been a net increase of 67 parking spaces and a net increase of 2,100 dwelling units over that same time period, which gives you a residential growth parking ratio of 3%. When you add the 181 units and the proposed 180 parking spaces, that gives you a ratio of 8%. And this is related to the permitted number of as-of-right parking spaces to dwelling units of 20%. So this map shows the parking sites that have changed. In the look-back period, there's only, I think, five or six. Then if you look at the residential sites, there are approximately 30, I believe. Yeah, 30. So the study showed that of the 30 new residential developments in the study area, 2/3 of the developments provided no parking. This number aligns with data that the department looked at in 2015 that's not related to this project, but we looked at an area in the Manhattan Core that included 83 new buildings, and of that, 59 buildings, or 70%, provided no parking in their building. For further context, within the 1/3 of the buildings that did provide parking, the Bjarke Engels Building, which is the building just south here, goes through the High Line also, and it's a large development on the same street of the proposed development. The Bjarke Engels Development is called the 11th and is one block south, and they built 47 parking spaces as-of-right. They could have built 62. They chose to build 47. So basically, to summarize this information, the Manhattan Core parking regime is affecting the neighborhood in that it comparatively discourages new parking. There's still a limited supply of new parking. Overall, it is decreasing in the neighborhood over time, while at the same time, there has been a substantial increase in population, residential development, and commercial development. Now, in response to issues raised during the public review process, the applicant is currently looking at a redesign of the garage, and they're looking at reconfiguring the parking spaces around the support structure of the High Line, which goes through the parking below grade, and increasing bike parking, adding residential and building storage, and removing some stackers. They were also looking at a design that could be more suitable to accommodating a wider array of users and taking into account overall character of the streetscape and the surrounding area. The department is continuing to work with the applicant on revising drawings and redesigning the space for a fewer number of parking spaces. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'll just note that when the team presented this analysis, I thought it was interesting enough to share with the Commission because we only see the applications for the special permits and didn't have the context of what's happening in the broader area. And I would certainly say kudos to the members of the Commission who were here when the most recent parking update went through because it does show that it is steadily, over time, decreasing the amount of parking and moving in a more sustainable direction. I'll also note, I'll amplify what Stephen said, that the applicant is working on a redesign of the garage, having heard the questions, the comments of the Commission, and we anticipate that it will result in a market reduction in the number of spaces and a better utility for bicycle parking there. We're certainly eager to see the revisions and will be bringing it back again to the Commission. With that, I'll toss it open for questions or comments. Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, Stephen, thank you for bringing this big picture. We, it is correct. We get buried down in the details, and we all have a certain amount of lore that we remember, some of us, about how this, you know, the path is taken, and it's so it's good to get a reality check on this. As you're talking to the applicant for 18th Street, you know, one of the concerns is about the provision of transient parking. So I would hope that if, you know, I recognize, and your information has focused on residential parking rather than transient parking. I would hope that if the applicant, the ultimate package that we're voting on includes spaces beyond the as-of-right number, that those could be limited to monthly parking by area residents, which I think is another way of ensuring that it really is used by residents and not by transient users, which I think is really important at this, particularly at this location, which has, is so attractive to people from outside the neighborhood, which is a good thing, but we just don't want them coming by car. While you're here, I have, I've had a technical question in the back of my mind about the parking ratio calculations, because applicants come to us and they have to do their analysis, and it includes new developments and projected developments. And then they get to sort of take credit for, their calculation is based off of all of those numbers, and then they get a permit for a big number of spaces. I'm thinking particularly of, what was it, 505 Washington, that had huge parking spaces in it. They did their calculation. They sort of took a number of spaces under the calculations, but now those parking spaces are not going to be built. So what does the next developer have to do? When they come in, a future developer comes in, looks at what's planned in the area, the, there are special permits on the books for parking that hasn't yet been built. Do they have to count those?
Yes, they do.
Special permits?
If they haven't lost the special permit, if they've been renewing it, they haven't put in foundations, built the development, and they haven't renewed it, come back to renew the special permit, then it's counted unless they don't come back.
So it only...
If they lose it, then it's removed.
So it only drops off the calculation if the permit doesn't get used?
So in all these, all these numbers that I've shown you today includes 550 Washington and the 425 spaces.
Okay. And that number would only disappear once the permit lapsed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we have to establish a queue.
Right.
You have to take into account every parking space. There's, they can build up, up to the 425 parking spaces that they were permitted. They could build fewer spaces, and we wouldn't have a better number until they built the development, and they told us that we only use 300 spaces.
Okay.
So anybody else in that study area could then put 300 spaces in their analysis.
Okay.
But until then, it's the 425.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, then we'll bring this back to our next review session.
Continued on post-hearing. Continuing on post-hearing, Blake Montieth is here to present on 3801 23rd Avenue rezoning.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The commission held a public hearing for the 3801 23rd Avenue rezoning on May 8. Today, I want to share the Department of City Planning's guidance in respond to concerns -- in response to concerns by the community board and borough president about the depth of the proposed commercial overlay. As you'll recall, the applicant proposes a C23 commercial overlay at a depth of 150 feet from 23rd Avenue. The community board and borough president expressed concerns that this 150-foot depth would allow for commercial encroachment into the residential mid-block. In response to these concerns, the Department of City Planning recommends that the commission remove a portion of the overlay beyond 100 feet of 23rd Avenue and within 75 feet of Steinway Street. This portion that would be removed is shown here in blue. This modification would remove the only residential building in the rezoning area. As a reminder, this building is a three-story multifamily walk-up building, and you can see it, it's the brick building on the right side of this image. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer your questions.
Questions from the commission? Thanks.
Thank you.
And continuing with post-hearing, we have Haikeng Yang here to discuss Casino Center. Just actually, we are losing our quorum. I don't -- did Commissioner De La Ouz -- we're good? Okay, okay, sorry.
This follow-up presentation is to clarify the comparison between the certified application of R7A C23 and the R6A C23 that the applicant team presented at the public hearing on May 8. On the left as certified, the applicant's actions include a zoning map amendment change from an R32 to an R7A, an R32 C22 to an R7A C23, and an R32 to R7A C23 district. On the right, as presented to the community board, borough president, and CPC's public hearing, they request a modification to reflect a zoning map amendment change from an R32 to an R6A, an R32 C22 to an R6A C23, and an R32 to an R6A C23 district, as well as reduce the rezoning boundaries lines approximately 145 feet from Laburnum Avenue to exclude Law 32. The applicant also seeks a zoning text amendment to designate an MIH area, which would be consistent with the R6A rezoning boundary lines. The red dotted line in the site plan and section represents the R7A bulk line as compared to the illustrated R6A bulk. This last slide compares the rendering of the development at the same scale. On the left is R7A, which shows a building at 95 feet tall with setbacks starting on the sixth floor, and on the right is R6A, which shows a building at 85 feet tall with setbacks starting on the fifth floor. Thank you.
We wanted to share this because we got more detailed information from the applicants after the public hearing.
Thank you.
So this is what they're willing to do at this point?
Yep. You'll recall that this is one where the community board voted, no, the borough president as well, but there was a lot of positive turnout at the public hearing, and the applicant has now given us the information we'd requested about exactly what changes they're proposing, which is the R6A. Questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I have a whole bunch of questions about this one. One of their arguments in favor of the R7A was that it brought into compliance the building on -- where is it? To the left.
The block up.
North of Holly Avenue, yes.
Correct.
There were two buildings, yes.
What happens to that? Would an R6A -- what would an R6A zoning designation do for those buildings?
They would bring it into still compliance.
Still into compliance?
Yes.
Have they done -- have they provided for you, you know, all the zoning calculations that would go into a full application for the R6A?
They've provided, I believe it's in your package. They provided a --
Well, we got this.
Yes, that, yes. But they would be prepared to provide a full zoning calculation if you require it.
Well, what is it? If they were -- if we were to modify the application in that way, is there another bunch of information that they would have to provide to city planning to complete the application, or at this point, it's just a modification that we would make on our own?
At this point, it's a modification that we could make on our own.
Okay.
And the department is comfortable with the request for the R6A?
You are. Okay, that was really it. So you're comfortable with the R6A. Are you also comfortable with cutting it back on Laburnum?
Yes, with both of the changes, yes.
And is there any -- I guess I was a little bit concerned by the amount of parking that is being provided purely in response to the community board's request, and it seemed to me that the whole arrangement of the two-level parking in this proposal looks kind of challenging with two levels below grade and a bunch of trucks going down a ramp and backing up into a corner and having to come out on, through an easement that they don't yet have onto Holly, and, you know, simply adding a bunch of cars because that's what they heard at the community board meeting. Now, normally, I'm all in favor of people being responsive to community requests, but that does seem like a large jump in the amount of parking. Does city planning staff have any advice for us on those aspects of the project? Is there an additional traffic study that needs to be done if they're increasing the parking by that much?
I think there was an ocean of parking in front of the existing building.
So initially, when the application went out, the parking required was the 177 for the commercial, for a total of 132. Additional approximately 80 parking spaces was analyzed by the applicant team, and they said it was appropriate, but it's something that we can talk to them about and see if it's really appropriate there.
We very much share the sense of frequently, communities will perceive a broader parking need than what the applicants or operators themselves will, and so we'd be glad to go back and kick the tires on that.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Bernie asks a correct question. You know, their baseline is probably how much parking is there now? And is this amount truly appropriate? And then finally, I would ask about their decision to propose option 1 for MIH, given affordability levels in the neighborhood. The information we got was that the median income in the area is 55%.
They're proposing option 2.
They're proposing option 2. It would seem that option 1 might better match the need in the neighborhood, and then at a minimum, we could map both 1 and 2.
Okay, yeah, that's possible. All right. Other questions or comments?
All right. Also on for post-hearing follow-up, 784 Cortlandt Avenue. Is there any further questions on that? That is well wrapped up. Okay.
Actually, before we shut down, I want to note that we're doing a special review session on Wednesday, because we wanted the POPS text amendment and the rural change to travel together to do one presentation, but I would encourage all commissioners to look at the exciting new design, the winner. We are especially pleased. It was an entirely blind competition. We had no idea who had submitted, and it was won by a young woman, five years out of design school, New York City-based, and so that just makes it all the sweeter.
So this concludes the City Planning Commission review session on Monday, May 20. The time is 4:24 PM.